Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for Monday, January 23. If we could have everyone stand to join Commissioner Toler, leading us in the pledge.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will now move to the oath of office for newly appointed planning commissioners by our city clerk, Brenda Green.
Thank you. This is the nominations for Chair and Vice Chair. We will begin with public comments. If anybody would like to speak on this issue for nominations of Chair and Vice Chair, now would be the time for public comments. Is there anybody on Zoom? There are no public comments. So we will now close public comments. So now, and tonight, we will be via all voice vote tonight. So nothing on your computers tonight.
Ms. Green, will you be seating the new commissioners before we do this?
Yes, I'm going to be doing them right now.
Okay.
All right, first, I will now accept nominations for Chair. The nominations require a motion and a second. So are there any nominations for Chair?
I'll make a nomination to nominate Commissioner Toler for Chair.
Does that motion have a second? The motion fails for lack of second. We'll still accept further nominations for Chair.
I'd like to nominate Adam Erith for Chair.
Who did that?
Commissioner Vivar.
Oh, Vivar, okay. Is there a second for that nomination?
I'll second that.
All right. Are there any further nominations for Chair? I will now close nominations and we will vote for the nomination of Commissioner Erith for Chair. Commissioner Toler? Oh. I'm sorry. Never mind. I should have had more coffee today, right? I'm on the wrong thing here. Everybody, I'll take it back. I'll get on track here one of these days. All right, would you please join me up here? We'll do the oath of office to the new commissioners.
Angela Andrade Vallarta.
Tim Taber.
Do you solemnly affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic, that you bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and will well and faithfully discharge the duties on which you're about to enter?
I will.
You do?
Yes.
Congratulations and welcome to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Actually, if you don't mind, I'd like to redo the nominations with the new members seated up there. All right, so I'm going to open again. I'll now accept nominations for Chair. And if you want to say the old motion stands, that's fine, too.
I'd like to re-nominate Adam Erith to the Chair.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Okay, I closed nominations. All right, so we have... Okay, so good. Commissioner Toler?
I'm sorry, are we doing a voice vote?
Yes, voice vote, please.
Aye.
Commissioner Andrade?
Aye.
Commissioner Zick?
No.
Commissioner Taber?
Aye.
Commissioner Vivar?
Aye.
Commissioner Erith?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rojas?
Aye.
Motion carries six one with Commissioner Zick voting no. Chair, Erith, would you mind if I did the nominations for Vice Chair? Would that be all right? Okay. So now I will now accept nominations for Vice Chair. The nominations require a first and a second also.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Toler for Vice Chair.
I'll second.
Second by Vivar? Commissioner Vivar?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? I closed nominations for Vice Chair. We'll do the roll call vote. Commissioner Rojas?
Aye.
Commissioner Toler?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrade?
Aye.
Commissioner Zick?
Aye.
Commissioner Taber?
Aye.
Commissioner Vivar?
Aye.
Chair Erith?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero. All right. Do you want to do roll call? All right. Thank you very much. Oh, I think we're going to take just a short break so we can just change seats for a moment.
Here, I see as far as announcements and presentations, there are no announcements or presentations tonight, which takes us to public comments. And these are for matters that are not listed on the agenda. So public comments will be heard at this time on items that are not listed on the agenda but are within our jurisdiction. I will open the public comment, and if you would like to speak, please come to the podium, or if you are participating via Zoom, use the raise hand option at the bottom of the screen.
Pardon me, Chair Erith?
Yes.
We didn't do roll call?
Oh, okay. Anna, if you'll just take the roll call, please.
Yes, of course.
Thanks.
Chair Erith?
Present.
Vice Chair Toler?
Here.
Commissioner Zick?
Here.
Commissioner Andrade?
Here.
Commissioner Vivar?
Present.
Commissioner Taber?
Here.
Commissioner Rojas?
Here.
Please note Commissioner Rojas is present via Zoom.
Thank you, Anna. So there are no announcements or presentations tonight, which takes us to public comment. Again, public comments will be heard at this time on items that are not listed on tonight's agenda but are within our purview as a commission. So if you'd like, please come down to one of the two podiums here. And if you're participating via Zoom, you can use the raised hand option at the bottom of the screen. And if you are joining the meeting on your phone and would like to speak, please press star nine. And we'll start with you, ma'am. Thank you.
So I'm here to talk about maybe we should start a Bring Back the Birds campaign because at 1:30 in the morning on Saturday, well, I guess Sunday morning, there was a loud bass noise, just boom, 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 like a nightclub that's been opened or something. So your code enforcement works Monday through Thursday, what, eight to five, nine to five, every other Friday off, Saturday and Sunday, two weeks at Christmas and the holidays. So have we thought about maybe starting an overnight shift for like, you know, all the stuff that goes on? Because as the city gets bigger, there's more people and there needs to be more, you know, I mean, you can only call them and hopefully they answer the phone, you know? So there definitely needs to be something done about the noise in this city that, you know, isn't being, you know, I mean, there's people complaining about dumpsters. People shouldn't be emptying dumpsters at five, six o'clock in the morning right next to houses, you know? I mean, just stuff like that. And like whenever the bass starts going, the birds go away, you know, they don't, they're not chirping anymore because they don't want to hear it either. So maybe we should start a campaign, Bring Back the Birds, and watch our volumes of all of our, you know, establishments. Whenever I do my laundry on Seventeenth Street, I can clearly hear the music coming from the restaurant clear across the road, you know? I mean, that shouldn't, you shouldn't hear it that far away, you know? So, I mean, that's all I have. Just, we need to do something. I mean, Monday through Thursday, nine to five, eight to five, every other Friday off, we gotta expand that a little bit if you're going to control your city. Have a great night.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else in chambers that wishes to speak for public comment? All right, Anna, do we have anyone via Zoom?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone on telephone?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I will now close public comment and we will go to Planning Commissioner comments and suggestions. So this time is for commissioners to provide their comments, starting with Commissioner Rojas.
I have no comments other than to congratulate you guys on your positions and wish you guys the best. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Zick?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Andrade?
Nothing today, aside from exciting to get started and represent, continue to represent Costa Mesa.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Taber?
Yeah, love Costa Mesa, been here 20 years, excited to serve and give back and help out.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to thank my family and friends, my fiancee, and community members who have supported my public service, as well as my colleagues around the city. So just wanted to thank everyone for their support and for having been entrusted with a full term on the Planning Commission. I'm really touched that. Councilmember Arliss Reynolds has chosen to reappoint me to this seat. And I pledge to carry out my duties as Commissioner without fear or favor and to serve the community with fairness and with a balanced approach to everything that comes to us here on this dais. So I am grateful to be back and I'm looking forward to working with the new Chair and Vice Chair and Commissioners Andrade Vallarta and Taber who are joining us up here. So again, thank you to the community members and residents of the city who've supported me, my family. And I'm glad to be back up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Vice Chair Toler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to say thank you to, or thank you. Well, yeah, thank you for electing me and trusting you as Vice Chair, but also welcome to the new commissioners. Glad to have some new faces up here. And congratulations on your chairmanship. I think Chair Erith is going to do a great job. He is smart, careful, does his homework with all of these projects. He visits applicants, he chats with applicants, he chats with staff, he reads every word of these conditions of approval and staff reports. And he has my trust to lead this. And it is nice with sober living homes and cannabis dispensaries and having a PhD in, I think, environmental health at the helm. That is really good. And we have a lot of hard work ahead of us. Housing element, bringing our other general plan elements into consistency with that housing element, rezoning, a lot of stuff on the plate. And I'm glad that we have this team up here. So congratulations, everybody, on your appointments and reappointments. And that's all.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. And I don't think I'm missing anyone, so that comes to me. I will start my comments by extending a very warm welcome to Commissioners Andrade Vallarta and Taber. It's wonderful to have you up here. Commissioner Andrade Vallarta, I know that you came over to us from Parks, and I know you've had a very successful time that you spent on the dais right here. I'm not sure if that's your same seat, but I know that you come in very high regard. And similarly to Commissioner Taber, your reputation precedes you. You're a staple in this community and it's a real pleasure to serve with you. I would also like to thank our past commissioners, Diane Russell, who was with us up until the most recent appointments. She did a stellar job, and I wanted to thank her for her time up on this dais as well. I would also like to thank Byron Diara Kell, who has left me with the biggest shoes to fill. I know exactly what he leaves behind, and I really do hope that I can live up to the expectations of this role in service to our community. So with that said, I'd like to thank this body for appointing me into this role. It's a real pleasure. It's a privilege and honor and a real deep responsibility that I do not take lightly. So thank you very much. And I look forward to all the fun we're going to have moving forward, which there is a lot of fun. So with that said, that will be the end of Commissioner comments tonight. So we'll go to the consent calendar. I see that we have no consent calendar items tonight, which takes us to public hearings. We have two public hearing items tonight. And Anna, will you please read the first one into the record?
Public hearing item number one, planning application 22-32 and tentative parcel map 2022-135 for a two-unit residential small lot subdivision development at 1592 Redlands Place. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Thank you, Anna. Commissioner Taber, any ex parte communications to report? Commissioner Vivar?
No.
Commissioner Rojas?
I have none, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Zick?
I visited the site, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Andrade Vallarta?
None.
Okay, Vice Chair?
Nope.
And I have none to report either. So I will turn this over to Mr. Arcas to present the item. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Congratulations to the new appointees and a very warm welcome to all. The item before you is a residential small lot subdivision for the property at 1592 Redlands Place. Specifically, it requires approval of a design review and tentative parcel map. The project, in essence, would divide the existing lot into two parcels to construct two single-family residence that are detached from one another. The project is located in Eastside Costa Mesa, east of Redlands Place. Surrounding development includes residential structures, one and two-story, both single and multifamily development. And that's consistent with the multifamily zoning, R2MD, which encompasses the surrounding. The existing site itself is improved with two one-storied duplexes that were constructed first in 1975. Here's an aerial view looking at the property facing east. As stated, the project would subdivide the existing parcel into two. The front lot would consist of around 4,200 square feet with around a 2,500 square foot residence with attached garage for two cars. It would feature four bedrooms and four baths. The front unit does request to deviate from the front-story coverage requirements to allow a balcony. That would be a 3% deviation, and that's to add further articulation to the frontage as seen from Redlands Place, which you'll see in a moment on the elevations. Parcel two at the rear of the property consists of around 3,600 square feet of lot area with a 2,500 square foot residence, attached garage, and it contains four bedrooms and three and a half baths. Here's a look at the site plan calling out the setbacks and separation requirements. At the center with the vertical line, that is the proposed new property line, the exterior property lines would remain. As you'll see, the small lot subdivision does provide some development flexibility, as there is no set, front setback measured from that vertical property line. You'll see it's compliant with the front side and rear setbacks. There's the required building separation of 10 feet that you'll see at the bottom of your screen. Here's a look at some callouts. The structure footprints themselves are in purple. You'll see the front unit to the left, the rear and the right. Redlands Place is on your left. The blue will be a private drive easement for the rear unit to access parking. And the green is indicating landscape around 1,600 square feet, including nine trees, 309 shrubs. The rest of the green area is ground coverage. The project is compliant with open space, rear yard coverage, height, and all other development standards. Here's a look at the front unit's floor plan. On the first floor, it features a kitchen, dining, living area. There's also a bedroom and bathroom. On the second floor, there's, contains the three other bedrooms and a bonus area, a den space, along with a few bathrooms. Taking a look at the rear unit on the first floor, living, dining, kitchen, a powder room, and the garage. On the second floor contains the bedrooms. And then taking a look at the elevations of the front unit, part of your approval tonight will look at the consistency in architectural design. In this case, the proposed design includes modern farmhouse features that includes materials and finishes which are durable and require minimal maintenance. You'll see the stone veneer siding, vinyl windows, boardum and battened siding, and metal seam roof. The structures themselves also provide modulation with the different roof pitches and the offset of the different facades, including that front balcony in the upper left of your screens. And that's where that deviation is requested. Without that, the visual interest would be lessened. Taking a look at their rear unit elevations, uses the same materials as the front unit. So there is a visual narrative there. You'll see that there's additional articulation with ornamental belting. The project does comply with the residential design guidelines, including second-story design, elevation treatments, building mass and roof, and also placement of windows. As mentioned, there is the deviation requested for the balcony of the first unit. In order to approve the project, the Planning Commission must find that the design promotes excellence and considers the compatibility with the neighborhood. And it also features appropriate first and second floor massing. The associated tentative parcel map, in order for that to be approved, the commission must find it consistent and compatible with the general plan, that the site is physically suitable to accommodate the subdivision. There's no interference with rights of wear easements. It also adheres to water quality requirements. There are conditions of approval included in the resolution that ensure that the development and use of the space is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. A few highlighted here, condition of approval number six, is substantial conformance with the approved plans. Any changes to the approval would require a planning division review or, depending on the extent, back for review at the Planning Commission level. Condition of approval number 13 requires compliance with the city's landscape ordinance, including the water efficient provisions. And then condition of approval number three is included to maintain privacy of the surrounding residences. Staff did receive public comment after the staff report was published, noting privacy concerns over the south-facing windows, notification of removal of the fence, the AC in trash locations, and parking. Except for the south-facing windows, the remaining three are more than, have the nature of ministerial level. For example, the AC and traction closures would be under separate permit and review, along with the fence. The parking and traffic generation is compliant with our zoning and general plan as proposed. More on the south-facing window. This is the right side of the property. The comment itself was from the neighbor at 1588 Redlands, and these were the windows of concern in red. Specifically for the right side rear unit windows, those would view directly into the neighbor's backyard. The commission does have options to modify the approval to accommodate changes addressing privacy. They also have the option to approve the project as is. Some different options to alter the design to encourage privacy would be the clear story windows, frosted glass, or require mature landscaping to help screen views. All things considered, staff does believe that the design is of quality and meets the intent of the small lot subdivision that encourages flexible design and opportunities for new homeownership. Staff also finds that the project fulfills the requirements to be exempt from CEQA under Class 32 and Class 3. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant ride hold him is here and available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Arcas. Commissioners, do you have any further questions for the applicant, starting with Commissioner Taber?
Question of the applicant?
Question of staff, I'm sorry.
Okay. If we require mature vegetation on that one side that looks into the neighbor's yard, does it have to start mature? Or it could start as a three-foot tree and then it just grows?
There would be minimum size requirements to first establish the planting, and then the expectation would be that over time it would provide the desired screening.
Thank you.
The commission could have some flexibility with regards to conditioning more matures at a certain height. They do plant, some nurseries provide certain trees, so the screening could be provided. So there is the possibility of that, but normally we do provide certain pot size a gallon.
Seems like a 20-foot-high tree is super expensive, but if the intent is that you're going to get like a three-foot tree and then gradually it's going to grow, that might be a nice gesture.
Yeah. As Planner Acus mentioned, it could even be a possibility if the commission desired a both. There could be, you know, or even all three, you mentioned three actually, raising the seal height of the windows, frosting the windows, and then plus the landscaping. So all of those would might combine, and they have been done in the past by the commission in this situation.
Thanks, that's all for me.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Tabor. Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, I do have one question for staff. Again, I do want to say as well, thank you for the great presentation as always. I just had a question regarding the driveway access. So do you happen to know what the current driveway width is and drive aisle, and if that would remain with the proposed new houses that will be constructed on the site?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Vivar. I'm not exactly clear on the existing dimensions. I do know that in the same location, there is an existing driveway, that the proposed design would relatively follow the same footprint.
And just so that I understand, this, the site would have six parking spaces or eight? Because I got a bit confused with the numbers.
Yes, each unit has two car spaces in a garage and then two open spaces in front of the garage for a total of four per unit, or a total of eight for the entire site.
Okay. No further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Commissioner Rojas?
I have no questions, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Zick?
Thank you, I've got a couple of questions, Mr. Akis. Thank you for your presentation. I'm looking on staff report, page five, the table at the top, and I understand your calculation for the front home, second floor to first floor being 100 and, or 1.03, 3% over. It's calculation for the rear home. Are those numbers reversed, or is your calculation 1.99 off? Because if the second floor is truly larger than the first floor, then it should be 1.004.
Commissioner Zick, thank you for pointing that out. I believe those numbers were transposed. The rear home does comply with the second-floor coverage and is below the 100% maximum.
Okay, thank you. And then also on that page, you indicate that there are some conditions of approval that you've incorporated that are required based on small lot subdivision ordinance. And I think I was a little confused about that. It appeared, I, if this was a common interest development, I would understand these conditions as a small lot subdivision. Aren't these legally and technically separate parcels after the subdivision?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Zick. While they would be separate parcels, there still are commonalities such as the shared driveway that would need to be handled through CCNRs and other common documents.
And if there wasn't a common driveway, then these conditions would not apply? For example, if the lot was wide and both properties faced the street, and they weren't one behind the other but side by side, in that case, would these not apply?
Most likely, yes.
Okay, and the reason why I ask that is because that middle paragraph indicates that because this is a small lot subdivision ordinance, it requires the following, and that's what I don't understand. If it said it requires them if applicable, that I understand. If it requires them by code, I don't understand that.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. You are correct with the way you've interpreted that. The code does require it, and it, and it general, I think it makes a general, it makes a general interpretation of most small lot subdivisions are carried through via a collection of homes that more or less work together, like a, that requires an HOA, and they have common areas. It's my understanding, most of them do have these, but the code does require it as it's written in the code, but like, like we mentioned, there might be certain situations, like in this one, if it did have two separate lots, as you described, or there might not be as necessary. So the only time that it might be different is, which might be willing to mention, is maybe an area in front of those properties where there's a sidewalk, or there's a landscape area where they share that. So there is situations where most likely that a CCNRs wouldn't be that necessary in common space and maintenance, but for the most part, I think all the small lots subdivisions that I've seen that have been approved or that are pending do in fact require it.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Akis, this correspondence from the Gleeson's, it looks like it was dated today. Was today the first time you were aware the neighbors had concerns about these windows?
That's correct, and I did have the opportunity to meet with the applicant this morning at the counter to discuss the comments in the letter.
You did have?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Andrade Velarte?
Not necessarily a question per se, but merely a comment. I appreciate that staff has carefully taken into account that this is encouraging residential property ownership, but I would just comment to ask, for whom? It would be great to see a little more equitable accessibility of future housing ownership in our community, because this is only available for a select few. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Toler?
I don't have any questions right now, thank you.
Okay, nor do I. So now I, I will now open the, let's see here. I will open the public hearing and ask whether the applicant or the applicant's representative is present, and please state your name for the record. Do we have the applicant here? If you can tell us your name, and if you've read the staff report and the conditions of approval, and do you agree to them?
My name is Daniel Morgan, I represent the owner.
Not sure if you have your phone close to the mic or not.
Daniel Morgan with Ownership, and this is Ryan Oldham.
I'm Ryan Oldham, Oldham Architects, architect for the project.
All right, welcome. I want to thank you all for your time, staff, for your hard work. We originally submitted this project on June 13th, and on June 12th, I was in here for a city council meeting where we talked about the moral obligation to build housing. And, you know, a project like this typically takes three months in a lot of cities. Here we are 224 days later, finding out about windows on the second, second story, looking into a neighbor's yard. I live in Costa Mesa, I work in Costa Mesa, my whole life is Costa Mesa. I'm open to all of them. I would like to ask to push back on, against the advice of my architects, to push back on the windows. Every two-story house in the United States can see into a neighbor's yard. It's not a burden. I'm happy to plant trees, so long as they're not going to cause root damage to the foundation or plumbing issues for the future owner. It's a very, very small gap between those two properties. We're happy to do whatever we can that's reasonable. I don't want to raise the, the, the bottom portion of the windows so that natural light is affected. Frosted glass may or may not be acceptable, I don't know. If we were going, if we were starting construction six months ago, when interest rates were a fraction of what they were, and, and, you know, we had a much clearer, clearer path ahead, I'd be much more, it would be easier to take gambles on things like this. We're all for building equitable housing. I presented a project to the city a couple years ago that was shot down because it was just a different type of equitable housing. One of the problems is, it's very hard to do business, in particular in the city. I'm building two multifamily ADUs on Placenta Street, and we've spent nine months trying to get our sewer line hooked up and approved by the sanitation department at a cost of Again, I, sorry, I'm kind of rambling at this point. It's been a long time coming. Good to see you again, Scott, sorry, or Director. But, yeah, open everything for windows really, I mean, it's a two-story house, the windows look into a yard. I don't think we should make that a stipulation for any two-story house in our city. You know, we should be good neighbors. They're going to have blinds, they're not going to want to have them looking in their backyard. It's, I don't think it's that big of a deal. Happy to listen to him if that's what it takes, but I really ask that we kind of push back on that and be reasonable and allow two-story homes to have windows on the second floor that are usable.
Thank you very much, and is that all?
I think, I think that's it. Do you have anything you want to say? You want to undo anything I said?
No, that's okay.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll, I'll go ahead and open it up to the commission and see if anyone has any questions here. I'll just leave it open if anyone wants to jump in. Commissioner Zick?
Are these two homes that you're building, are they presold, or you'll try to sell them once you build them?
Honestly, right now, what we're trying to do is figure out if we can build them. The construction financing market's not available, so, long story short, they're not sold.
So regardless of how the windows are constructed, a new buyer won't know the difference between whether they were originally planned to be one type versus another type, correct?
Correct, however, if they walk into a primary bedroom that has insignificant natural light, they're going to notice that and not be necessarily as inclined to purchase it. Natural light is a big, a big driver for people. It impacts their mood. You know, it's just a huge component, but no, they wouldn't know unless they're here tonight whether or not the windows were, were different.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Anyone else here? Commissioner Rojas?
No questions, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, and I have no questions either. Thank you so much. I think you can go ahead and take a seat for now. I will now open up for public comments. If you'd like to speak to this item, please approach the podium. If on Zoom, use the raise hand option. If you're joining the meeting on your phone and would like to speak, please press star nine. So do we have anyone in chambers that would like to speak? Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead and turn your mic on.
Hi, my name's Maura Gleason. I am the adjacent homeowner. I'd first like to address the comments that have come up about the timing of my comments regarding the windows. We first became aware of this project going forward when we got the notice in the mail, which was just a little over a week ago. Last Monday was a holiday. I called and spoke to the planning department on Wednesday. The plans were published online on Thursday, the planning department was closed on Friday. I talked to the planning department today, and here I am tonight. So in terms of timing, I hope that covers any issues. In terms of the second-story window, I also need to push back a little bit. My comments had no, no implication or comment that there should not be second-story windows. Of course, second-story windows are expected. My comments are regarding the size and position of the windows. Between the two houses, there are six, six-foot-tall windows, five of which are three feet wide and one is four feet wide. Two of those windows are in front of our back gate. The front house is really less of an issue for us. The third window in the front house does overlook our side yard, and it might have some great views down into our trash cans and into our living room. These are down-angled views, but because the sill height is so low, because they're a six-foot-tall window, I do feel that this is an issue. The back house has three windows, all of which look directly into our backyard, and again, they're six feet tall windows with a very low sill height. There is no privacy, there is no landscaping, it is a five-foot setback. You know, I am uncertain what they would be able to plant in that five-foot setback for those trees to become mature in any reasonable amount of time. My request was actually specifically to raise the sill height, but we of course are open to other options. I'd like to emphasize that we're not saying there shouldn't be windows. We know we're going to lose some amount of privacy, but if you're talking about refrigerator-sized windows, three of which look directly down into the open space of our backyard, we are going to lose all privacy that we have in the backyard, and I view that to be a significant issue for us. I believe that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak on this item? Okay, thank you. Anna, do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Telephone?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any further questions for the applicant?
Yeah, one question, if I may, Chairman. I, I did a site visit on Saturday, and I realized that the, the front unit seems to be empty, and the back unit seemed to be occupied, so I was just wondering if the, if, if it indeed is occupied, whether the, or how much time the residents of that rental unit were given advanced notice before this item came to the planning commission, and how long they have left to find a new place to live.
We found out two weeks ago, the front unit's been uninhabitable for about five years, after trying to reconstruct it to do month-long rentals furnished for people doing renovations. Back unit is a local family who's renovating their home. They originally were going to be in there on a month-to-month basis through the end of December, but as construction goes, they're still there, and at this point, we have no immediate plans to start construction. We're probably four months out from permits in the best-case scenario, and then who knows if there's a construction financing market? So it's not a long-term tenant, it's a month-to-month midterm tenant. When we purchased the property, it was, it was delivered, it was delivered vacant, so I have no knowledge of previous tenants or anything like that.
So if the, if, if you were to obtain the approval tonight from planning commission and get your funding and everything else you need in place to, to build your project, what are the plans for the, I guess, vacating that occupied unit, the family that's there?
If they needed more time at this point, there's not really a reason to start construction right now. I don't know if you've been kind of following the news, but, you know, to the extent we can, we're, we're planning for the future, but I, I can't imagine a scenario in which they're still there. If they need more time, we're happy to give it to them. We, we put them in there because this started, or we opened it up to and furnished them because this was taking longer than needed, and we were trying to offset some of our carry costs, including property taxes and, and interest, but there's not a scenario in which the occupant of that home will be displaced, because we're kicking them out for construction.
Okay. All right. So thank you for your answer, and I appreciate the honesty there, and I would just make a comment that, you know, I hope that if you are able to get everything in, in line for this project, and that they're able to, you're able to provide the tenants of that unit any help that they may need to relocate.
Sir, with all due respect, they're building a $5 million home, and it's on a month-to-month basis. Vacating tenants is not an issue here, but we will help them out any way possible.
Sure.
I appreciate your concern, thank you.
All right, thank you. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Any other commissioners wish to make comment? Vice Chair?
Sure. Well, I have a question for Ms. Gleason, if I may. Can we still do that? Yeah, yeah, I was going to ask you. So this is, the applicant's asking for a slight deviation for the front balcony, and this is a design review, but you have this privacy, seems valid, larger than normal windows, but you said you'd, you'd be fine if, if they were, staff provided maybe like three options, but you, you also talked about raising the window sill height. So up here, we're in the position of settling this for you guys, so I'd like to hear what, what would satisfy your concerns. What, what sort of windows? Would frosted windows, clear-story windows? I, I have the same feeling about the landscaping, I mean, you can't fit a very big, that comes with trouble, right? I mean, roots and stuff.
Right, and I'm not an architect. I would need to defer to you and the architect about what the options are. I would be happier if the windows were three feet by four feet with a higher sill height, preferably, you know, a 48-inch sill height as opposed to 18 or 24, which is what I'm guessing it is to. guessing it is today. I feel that sill height, it doesn't matter where you are in the room, you'll be able to look out onto our property and see the whole backyard.
Yeah.
So that would address the issue. The clear-story windows, of course, that would also take care of the issue and provide the natural light that they're looking for, although I think that natural light comment is somewhat short-sighted because at, at any point, should we add on to our property or sell our property and somebody builds on it? Because we live in a, you know, 1948, single-story house now, you know, somebody also is going to build to a five-foot lot line, and that natural light is gone. So, you know, longer term, I think that's an issue. But, but for us and for our backyard, and to be clear, we've lived in this house since 2001. We're long-term owners and occupiers. We don't foresee moving out at any point. So this is a long-term issue for us. So again, I, I think I'd be happy with a sill height. I'd also be happy with other things that might do something to preserve our privacy in the backyard.
Right, okay. Thanks for coming up again. May I, may I ask the architect to come up and, and the applicant? Sorry, everybody.
Yes.
Okay, so, so given that, that concern, I, I want to hear what's, what's palatable. I mean...
We're happy to raise the glass off, two feet off the ground. I don't like the idea of it above.
Of, of clear story.
Right, right. That's, I, I've lived in places like that. You collect dust, it's...
Sure.
I don't like it.
That's where the toys get stuck.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then you can't, you get those little, the, the foldy things, and you can't reach them, and you, right? So we're happy to raise the sill height.
Yeah, we could, we could raise the sill height.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't want to go...
So the sill right now, the sills right now are at 24 inches above the floor. So we could, you know, four feet above the floor would be fine.
Yeah, and is that, I don't know offhand, is that standard? I mean, you guys have larger-than, than standard windows.
It's a, it's a little larger than standard. I mean, we find that people, the bigger windows become a bit of a wow factor in those bedrooms like that. So it's, it's just nice because it floods a ton of natural light in, but it does not cause a problem to raise them up to four.
And would that be preferable to stay in the same size but frosted?
Absolutely.
I mean, frosted up to a certain point?
Yeah, and the problem with frosted is any owner could come in and replace that glass. And so then it's not frosted anymore. But yeah, the sill, and the frosted will, will minimize, it'll diffuse the natural light a bit, so having clear glass is better.
Okay.
And we can also commit to putting in like reasonable window coverings, which we're going to do anyways. I think there's lots of things that we can do that aren't going to, you know, that aren't going to, you know, impact us and should help mitigate their concerns. I've lived in a two-story home next with people who have windows who look into ours, and, and I get floor, close to floor-to-ceiling windows. It, it is a lot, and I'm kind of embarrassed. I didn't realize they were two feet off the ground. I thought they were like four feet off the ground. So I would have given that up the first time. He's a good architect. But yeah, so four feet off the ground is pretty close to standard. What's standard? Let's just go whatever standard is.
Well, yeah, so, I mean, there's, no, not necessarily standard. I mean, a three-foot by five-foot, so these are nine-foot ceilings up there, so they have eight-foot head heights on the windows. A five-foot window is kind of maybe standard. We, we increase the height by one foot, but, you know, for, to me, none of these windows along the south side are required for egress purposes, fire escape purposes, so we have flexibility with them. Four foot is a good height that you're not going to be able to see down in the yard unless you're standing kind of right at the window, I suppose. Yep.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Does the applicant have any closing comments you wish to make?
Staff, I really appreciate all your help over the last several months. And to the Honorable Commission, I greatly appreciate your time, your consideration, and your efforts in helping to resolve the windows. And we hope that this gets approved, and we're...
I have one comment I want to make about that front balcony. It, the, the reason it's slightly over is that balconies are counted as second-floor area. So the balcony helps add some interest to that front elevation rather than just having a roof element there, which wouldn't count as second-floor area. But planning staff liked the look of the home with the balcony, and so we decided to keep it in as a point of interest on that front elevation, even though it slightly does go over the second-floor area.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Commissioners, do you have any further questions for staff? Commissioner Rojas?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. I will now close the public hearing and ask one of my commissioners for a motion.
I can make a motion. Okay, I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to find the project categorically exempt from provisions of SEQA, Guideline Section 15315 and 15332, and approved design review PA 2232, and tentative parcel map 2022135, subject to the conditions of approval with the added condition that the south-facing windows on the rear building have its sills 48 inches off the ground, off the, off the interior second-story floor.
Is it all to the motion, Vice Chair?
I'm done.
Okay, thanks. Do we have a second? No seconds?
Yes, seconds.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Andrade Vayarta. And Vice Chair, do you have any further comments you'd like to make?
Sure, this one, this one's a little tricky because our zoning allows this. This is a small lot subdivision, so, you know, the whole point of design review and everything is to preserve residential character, right? Everybody wants that feel of that neighborhood to be preserved as new, new buildings go up. And in that pattern, you typically, I mean, these are, these are 8,000, 6,000-square-foot lots. Typically, you have a house in front, you have a big backyard. Maybe you have an ADU, a small granny flat in the back where mother-in-law lives, college kids live, whatever. Now, this is a, this is a new development pattern. This is a whole nother house. This is a four-bedroom, 2,500 square feet parked in the backyard of these lots that were part of a different environment, you know, when they were built in 1948 or whatever. And I don't know if that's intentional. It's, it kind of, I always think of these as kind of like donkey suit developments, like someone's in the back and someone's in the front. And, and, you know, these are spec homes, right? This is a flip, and we're, someone's got to, someone's got to stand up for the future, someone's got to advocate for the future owners or renters or whatever it may be of these projects. So I, I want to take these carefully. And one, one comment I do kind of have is, and this is, this is our code. This isn't the project. The project at hand, they're doing, they're, they're, they're building it out to what's permissible, and, and they're creating an extra unit and good, good, good units in Costa Mesa for people to move into. But our code, so this is medium-density residential, which I think is one per 3,000. So in dwelling units per acre, typically, the R1, the, the single-family residential is like seven or eight dwelling units per acre. Now, one per 3,000, we're at like 15 dwelling units per acre. And I just feel like at some point, well, this is true, all of us have in our mind, at some point, you're not in single-family residential land anymore. Like 20 units, 30 units to the acre, you're still going to try to do detached, single-family homes? There's a, there's a limit where it's like, it's time to click up to the next housing type, duplex, triplex, quadplex, a courtyard building, cottage court, something with the same two-story residential character. But these, these small-lot subdivisions, I think they kind of have unintended consequences. And this is what we have. We have a 1948 house on the front of the lot, and now you have a house overlooking their backyard. And nobody intended for that. And I, I hope that over the course of my time here, we can, we can figure out better ways to do that. So once you get up to a certain density, you're not cramming in more four-bedroom houses, but it's just a different, it's just a, maybe a duplex with two bedrooms each, you know, something that a young family could afford, because these are going to be, to, to Ms. Andrade's point, who's, who's moving into these? These are going to be million-dollar homes, right? So sorry to ramble, but I think that's worth, that's worth talking about, and now's the chance to say those things. But I think we found a solution. Everybody wins. I think it's a good-looking house. It's on a cul-de-sac, and we're going to have a, we're going to have a nice new homes in Costa Mesa, and a good job to the applicant and the architect.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Andrade Vayarta, do you have any comments? No comments, okay. Any other motions to make? Okay, I will start with Commissioner Tabor. Do you have any comments on the motion?
I don't really need to add it to the motion, but it'd be cool if you guys put some plants up, like a silver sheen pitasporum. Those grow really tall, and they're thin, and they don't have a dense root. Just a suggestion.
Is it all? Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, I'd like to make one comment, and I, this doesn't necessarily suggest that I'd like a, a design change to this project. I, I think it's fine the way it is. However, I will say that just kind of going through the staff report and considering the, the project as a whole, it felt a bit much that the project has eight parking spaces. I mean, I think that houses need parking, you know? People are still going to be driving cars for the foreseeable future. So I, I think that, you know, maybe going forward in, in, in an effort to maybe create more open space, green space, that architects may consider foregoing extra parking spaces for, for grass or native plants or some other kind of area, and especially if these houses are going to be occupied by, by families, having space that kids can play and enjoy themselves and, you know, run around. It's, you can do that on, on concrete, but it's, it's not as fun. And, yeah, so I, I think that eight, eight parking spaces is a bit much for this. So, but, and I, I don't know if at some point it'll take revisiting our parking codes and parking requirements. I don't think this should have zero parking either, but again, finding ways to provide for the necessities of people and balance that, whether it's parking space, open space, and green space, and, and any other components of a, a housing project. So those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Commissioner Zick?
Thank you. I think the more I hear, the more I want to say. First of all, I support the motion, and I'm sure as far as you guys are concerned, that's, that's all you really care about, is get your project approved. But a couple of things that I've heard make me want to comment. First of all, the small-lot subdivision ordinance, which came about in the city, came about for one specific reason, and it was to create more possibilities, more opportunities for ownership. That's what you guys are creating by creating two houses that somebody can buy. We're not looking for more apartments out of that ordinance, we're not looking for a high-density out of that ordinance. We're looking for ownership opportunities. You're providing it. Thank you for doing that. Terms of parking, it doesn't take a person too much math to figure out that if a family buys that house and both parents work, and they have a teenage driver, they might need to park three cars. And if you're only providing two spaces per home, makes it pretty tough. That third car goes out on the street, the public street. I don't think we want that. So I congratulate you for properly parking your development, not that you had a choice, but when you provide under-parked properties for sale, people look at it and wonder where they're going to park the car. Makes your project less desirable. Tenant displacement, I don't think that's a property owner's responsibility. If a tenant doesn't want to be displaced, don't sign a month-to-month agreement, sign a long-term lease agreement. It's individual accountability. You're not their parents, you're a landlord, and the lease agreement you have with them sets the terms. You're on one side of the deal, they're on the other. You're not responsible for them. Balcony in front, I love that design. Balconies on the side and in the back, we've seen issues with in terms of, again, overlooking neighbors' properties. Balcony in front, it's more eyes on the street, it's much better curb appeal, it's a great design, and I applaud you for your architectural design. Notice from the Planning Commission, so I feel for Ms. Gleason's challenge. Imagine if she was on vacation. She comes home and finds out a project was approved next door to her. That's not your problem, that's not your issue. But imagine the challenge that she actually had, finding out a project was going up next to her with only a week's notice, then trying to find out, well, what are the specifics of that plan? What's the floor plan of that plan? Try to understand the impact to her of that plan, and then actually put a coherent communication back to the city about those concerns. Imagine that challenge. And you guys have been working on this project how long? You don't have to answer, it's rhetorical. It would be great if homeowners adjacent to a property where a planning application has been submitted would get notice that a planning application was received by the city. That'd be real nice if that happened, then they'd know something was up, and they'd have opportunities to try to find out more about it. I support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Rojas, any final thoughts?
None, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. And I think that comes to me. I will be supporting the motion. I have very few comments. I think this is a good project. I, I think it looks really good. I think that the recommendation for the additional condition of approval seems very reasonable, and hopefully, the neighbor is amenable to this as well. So with that being said, Anna, roll call vote, please.
Chair Erath?
Yes.
Vice Chair Toller?
Yes.
Commissioner Rojas?
Yes.
Commissioner Zick?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrade, Andrade?
Yes.
Commissioner Vivar?
Aye.
Commissioner Tabor?
Yes.
The motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Anna. That decision is final unless appealed to the City Council within seven days. Good luck, and thank you very much. I appreciate it. I think at this point, before we get into the next item, let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break, just to stretch, and we will be back at 7:25. Thank you very much. I call the meeting back into order. We have our second agenda item for the evening, and I'll ask Anna to read it into the record, please.
Public hearing item number two, planning application 21-36 for a retail cannabis storefront business located at 167 Cabrillo, Cabrillo Street, Cabrillo Community Project LLC, DBA Native Garden. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Commissioners, any communications to report, starting with Commissioner Zick?
I met with the applicant, and they're... I met with the applicant and their representatives. I spoke with a homeowner and did a little bit of research on my own with regard to conditions of approval on previous applications.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rojas?
None, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Andrade Veriarte?
None.
None. Commissioner Vivar?
Yeah, I exchanged one email with the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Taber?
Yeah, I received an email from someone on the applicant team, but I didn't get a chance to respond to it.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair.
Yes, I met with the applicant on Friday. They gave me a short presentation, and I asked some questions.
Okay, thank you. And I also exchanged a couple of emails with the applicant, including holding, I believe, two calls. I will note, for the public record and for transparency purposes, that there was a little bit of back and forth about a potential donation to a nonprofit that I'm the director of, at which point I, I found out today that that donation was not made, at least in any measurable way. I couldn't find a record of it, so that, that point became moot. But I did want to at least mention that for the, the public's knowledge. Okay? And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Halligan to present the item.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, and welcome to our new Commissioners. I'm Michelle Halligan, Contract Planner with the Economic and Development Services Department. Planning application 21-36 is a request for a conditional use permit for a retail cannabis storefront without delivery. The proposed storefront name would be Native Garden. Here is a map of the retail storefront CUPs that have been reviewed by the Planning Commission. To date, the Planning Commission has approved 14 CUPs for retail cannabis storefronts. The approved CUPs are shown in green. Two denied CUPs are shown in yellow. The location being presented tonight is shown in blue. Costa Mesa's retail cannabis permitting process includes several steps. First, there is a pre-application, then a cannabis business permit application, and then the conditional use permit application. If approved, the applicant would then move forward for building permits, pass inspections, obtain a CBP, and then a local business license. The use would also be subject to a state license. The subject site is an approximately 7,200-square-foot property located at 167 Cabrillo Street. It is currently occupied by a storage facility for a hot tub business. The site was originally developed as a single-family home in the 1940s. In 1980, it was legally converted to a violin shop. Two adjacent properties were also converted from residential use to commercial ones. One property located next door was developed as a residence and remains residential today. The properties across Cabrillo Street are residential, and the property across Fullerton Avenue is a parking lot dedicated to specific businesses. That parking lot cannot serve the proposed cannabis establishment. The site is zoned CL, Commercial Limited District, and bounded by three properties that are also zoned CL. The property across Fullerton Avenue is also zoned CL. The municipal code defines the Commercial Limited District as being "intended for unique areas of land, which, due to the proximity of residential development or the potential for traffic circulation hazards, require special precautions to be taken to assure appropriate development." Here is a map showing the existing zoning pattern in the area. The residential zones are shown in green, brown, and yellow. The red areas are for general business uses. So, the red areas are intended for our more intense commercial uses. You can see that they're primarily located along Newport Boulevard and 17th Street in this part of the city. Our focus is on the orange parcels. Those are zoned CL. The subject site is orange with a yellow outline. These orange properties are located between the red parcels, where there are higher, more intense commercial uses, and the residential zones. In this area, you can see that the CL zone is a transitional space from more intense commercial uses to the residential uses. This is a zoning pattern where the CL properties act as a buffer. Commercial uses allowed in the CL zone are generally low to moderate trip generating, often with limited hours. For example, offices that encourage or require appointments. The CL zone is located here to benefit the residents who need a transitional space. Here, the top two photos show the existing conditions of the property from Cabrillo Street. The photos below show the property from Fullerton Avenue. You can see part of the adjacent home on the right. You can tell that 167 Cabrillo Street was originally a home. In 1980, the home was converted to commercial use for a violin sales and repair shop. The staff report for the conversion from residential to commercial use stated that the use would be, quote, "low volume with low customer traffic." Here are some photos of the existing conditions on this segment of Cabrillo Street. At the top is a view of Cabrillo Street at Wells Place, facing west. The lower photo shows Cabrillo Street at Fullerton Avenue, facing east. 167 Cabrillo is on the right. This gives you an idea of the neighborhood context. If approved, this would be the first retail cannabis storefront CUP on local streets in Costa Mesa. The other approved CUPs were on primary commercial corridors with a strong retail context. This is the proposed site plan. The applicant proposes to update the landscaping, update the building facade, and reorient the front door to face Fullerton Avenue. If approved, the driveways and parking lots should be resurfaced and restripped. A wall would be added to the interior property lines. As proposed, customers arriving by car would enter from the narrow driveway on Cabrillo Street and exit onto Fullerton Avenue. The required parking count for a 1,000-square-foot retail space is four parking spaces. The proposed site plan accommodates five parking spaces plus a bike rack for a total of six parking spaces. If the CUP is approved, a detailed landscaping plan, including trees, and a photometric study would be required. The proposed establishment would occupy the entire building. The proposed plan includes two major areas. The retail sales area, where customers would be allowed, is shown in green. The back of the house area, where only employees are allowed, is shown in red. Customers would enter and exit through the front door. Vendors would have to deliver through the limited-access door in the rear, well-accompanied by an employee with the proper security credentials. Here are some conceptual renderings of the exterior improvements, as well as the retail sales floor. The applicant provided a detailed business plan. It was reviewed by the city's cannabis consultant. It was not attached to the staff report, as it contains proprietary details. The applicant also prepared, or provided a professionally-prepared security plan. It was evaluated by the city's cannabis consultant and deemed appropriate to meet the city and state's requirements. Costa Mesa has over 50 standard conditions of approval related to measure Q uses. For example, they're required to have a 24-hour security guard on-site. There are age restrictions, and consumption is prohibited on-site. The Planning Commission can modify conditions of approval and propose new ones. There are three required findings for approving a conditional use permit. The proposed use must be substantially compatible with other uses in the area. The use should not be materially detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public or the area. And the use must comply with the general plan. After analyzing the proposed operation, staff could not conclude that all three required conditional use permit findings can be satisfied. The proposed storefront would not be along a bustling commercial corridor. This small block of Cabrillo Street is not Harbor Boulevard. It's not Newport Boulevard, and it's not 17th Street. 167 Cabrillo, Cabrillo Street is adjacent to both residential and non-residential uses. However, the adjacent non-residential uses are not retail in nature. They're primarily office uses with limited hours. Some of them actually function off-site. For example, like a landscaping company or a construction company, whose offices are in the CL zone, but most of their work is conducted off-site. Other businesses located in the CL zone have limited hours and also require one-on-one or appointments to control crowds and traffic. Unlike those operations, the proposed storefront would operate for 11 hours per day between 9:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. The use would not have a mechanism to regulate customer traffic. Noise could also be a potential land-use compatibility concern, especially given the proposed intensification of customer traffic and increased hours open to the public. A cannabis storefront would not be substantially compatible with the area. As for general plan consistency, the site has a designation of neighborhood commercial. The neighborhood commercial district is intended for the lowest-intensity commercial uses. Note that the general plan policy of C1.11 directs the city to reduce or eliminate intrusion of traffic related to non-residential development on local streets in residential neighborhoods. Staff believes the specific use, a high-volume retail use in this specific location on a local street, is not compatible with the transitional buffering and resident-serving intention of the CL zone. A cannabis storefront would likely serve a greater-than-local customer base. Customized conditions of approval may be able to reduce potential impacts, but without a significant change in the proposed operation, the use would not be substantially compatible with the neighborhood nor the general plan. In closing, remember that the CL zone is an area, as a transitional buffer area in which special precautions shall be taken to avoid negative impacts. With that, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to "find the project categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, and consider the staff analysis and deny the project as proposed per the facts in support of denial outlined in the attached resolution." Alternately, the Planning Commission could approve the project as proposed. Staff would then prepare a revised resolution incorporating the findings and conditions of approval as directed by the Planning Commission, or approve the project with modifications. The Planning Commission may suggest specific changes necessary to alleviate impacts. Staff would prepare a revised resolution incorporating findings and conditions of approval as directed by the Planning Commission. If any changes are substantial, the hearing should be continued to a future meeting to allow additional analysis of those changes. The applicant's agent, Christopher Glue, has also prepared a presentation. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available to answer your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Halligan. And I will say, as a, a point of order on the heels of what I mentioned about the nonprofit discussion from earlier, that this exchange with the applicant has not biased me for or against this project. I, I am very willing to consider all the evidence, so I'm, I'm not biased in any way, just so everyone knows that. Okay? And with that, thank you, Ms. Halligan. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff on this item, starting with Commissioner Rojas?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Zick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Halligan, for your, your thorough report. Just a quick question on staff report page three. In the last paragraph, the single-family residence you identify as 160 Wells Place, is it really 175 Wells Place? Just want to make sure I've got the right property.
175 Wells Place, it actually should have been 175 Cabrillo.
Cabrillo, that's what I meant.
So, one, yeah, 160 Wells Place is the resident. Thank you.
You mean 175 Cabrillo?
175 Cabrillo Street is a non-residential site. 160 Wells Place is residential.
Thank you for that. On page seven, the hours of operation, and notice there was just one inconsistency in the report. The actual proposed hours of operation are 8:00 a.m., excuse me, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So, what's indicated on staff report page seven is incorrect, I believe.
Thank you. The analysis was based on the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So, throughout the analysis, those are the hours that we assumed. There was a typo in the description.
So, 8:00 p.m. would be the closing time?
That's correct.
Okay. And in terms of separation requirements, just so I'm clear, on the staff report page eight, there are separation requirements for K through 12, playgrounds, child, daycare, homeless shelter, youth center, et cetera. There is no indication, and there is no separation requirement from residential as part of the ordinance, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And also on that page, oh, yeah, so you indicate the subject site complies with separation requirements. Okay. And then on page 11, just so I'm sure I understand this, the business plan, the applicant's business plan was appropriate, so there were no problems with that, correct?
The city's cannabis consultant reviewed it, and they did have the required components.
Okay. And the appropriate security measures were included. Okay, on parking, so the requirement is four per thousand, and that's standard for resident, excuse me, retail. That four per thousand accounts not only for customers of a business, but employees of a business also, correct?
Commissioner Zick, the retail standard is four stalls per 1,000 square feet, and so that would include both. The applicant is available tonight to talk about their plan for parking.
Understand, but a, a business isn't required to provide anything beyond the four per thousand. They don't have to put their employees somewhere else. They can if they want, but they're not required to.
Correct, they are not required to.
Okay. All right, so we comply with parking. Okay, thank you for that. I was puzzled by this comment on the top of page 13 that says, "The office space at 170 Wells would need to be vacant, would need to remain vacant, so, so the three parking spaces would be surplus and available for the employees." So, I'm a little confused by that. If the 167 Cabrillo meets the parking requirements, and if the applicant also happens to have another location that they intend to use for parking, I guess I'm not understanding why that, that building would have to remain vacant.
So, Commissioner Zick, those parking stalls would need to be available for their employee parking, because the applicant proposes to use them for employee parking. So, if that space was operated by a different business, or even the same business, they could have their employees working there, and then that parking would need to be used for both those office employees as well as the retail storefront employees. So, if they are proposing to use them for the retail, retail storefront employees, they need to be available for those folks.
Okay, I think I understand your point there. And then in terms of the ADT, so for this business, you calculate 108 trips per thousand. And, but you indicate that the, that the proposed storefront is only going to be adding an additional 53, which is under the 100, which would have triggered the traffic analysis, correct?
That is correct. So, to date, all of the cannabis retail storefronts that have been presented to the Planning Commission were under that ADT and did not require a traffic study. I will say that my understanding of the ITE manual used by transportation doesn't have a, a great comparison for the existing use, hot tub storage. It's a really unusual use, so they used a generic retail category, and then compared that to the proposed use.
Okay, and I, and I think we've done that in the past. And it raises a question in my mind, because I know we don't have approved cannabis businesses in the city that have been operating long enough for us to actually validate the assumption that we're doing in this analysis. But the city of Long Beach and city of San Ana have lots of retail cannabis businesses, and- and are we able to understand from them whether our modeling is anywhere close to what actual retail cannabis businesses are utilizing?
Jennifer Rosales from Transportation is here.
She's on Zoom. Help her out, Anna, please.
Yes, yes, hi, Commissioner Zick. So, Transportation, we did talk to Santa Ana and their experiences. We looked at San Diego, Long Beach, also cannabis in the desert as well. We looked, so we reviewed cannabis sites and talked to traffic engineering, as well as planning staff, in several cities in our research. And based on that, and their experiences, is how, is one of the ways that we came up with the trip rate for what we believe is the best estimate for cannabis in Costa Mesa.
Got it, and that's that 108 number?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much, Jennifer. Okay, and then on staff report, page 15, in terms of the general plan policy objectives, we're saying that with regard to LU 1.1, providing a development and mix of balanced housing, this proposed application does that. Encourage facilities that expand cities' revenue, it does that. Promote unique specialized commercial industry districts, it does that. The policy LU 3.1, protect existing stabilized residential neighborhoods from encroachment of incompatible or potentially disruptive land uses. I think we're validating that, but we do have an issue with the hours of operation. And I was curious about that as it related to these uses for CL. And when I look at staff report, page 20, the one that really stood out to me as being a by-right use, no discretionary approval needed, no CUP needed, was banks. Any bank I've ever been to is a nonstop flow of people in and out, cars in and out, short visits in and out. And in my mind, I can't think of a more similar vehicle and pedestrian pattern than that. So could you explain to me how it is that banks would be allowed by right, not CUP, by right, in CL, and this use is deemed to be more intensive?
Commissioner Zick, I just want to point out that with policy land use 3.1, that staff did not find the proposed use would be compatible with that general plan policy.
Okay, thank you.
And then when discussing some of the uses that are allowed in the CL zone, one of the stipulations for a bank is that they have to have a minimum of five parking stalls. Let's see. Or they have, sorry, they have a minimum of six parking spaces and a ratio of five spaces per 1,000 square feet.
That's even more intense then, isn't it?
No, I'm saying that their parking requirements are more strict than a retail storefront, and I don't know if this site would pencil out as such. It's been developed at its maximum floor area ratio, so the property can't be added to.
I'm not, I'm not saying that a bank would fit on this piece of land. What I'm asking about is, has to do with the intensity of the use that is allowed in a CL zone by right, nondiscretionary, non-CUP. And in fact, your comment about the bank requiring five spaces per thousand is an indication that the parking requirements of a bank are even higher. There's more activity, more people, hence the higher requirement for parking. So I'm just trying to reconcile in my mind the difference between that high-intensive use and this use.
I saw that. Commissioner Zick, thank you, and I think you did bring up an interesting point. One of the issues I'd like to note, at least how it's written in the report, which regarding the banks, is that it does not include an ATM. And then I'd also like to note that there has been a shift in bank use over the years, and probably 20 years ago, when banking was pre-internet and pre-app and pre-cellphone, a lot of banking was done in person or at the ATM. But currently, I can, I think that there's a heavy trend, and that's why this might fit in this land use category better, is because the current trend, and a lot of banks have closed because of it, is because banks are, it's, banking is going online. So generally, as most people that bank do it right over their cell phone.
So I can see how that activity at bankings has changed over time, but at the time that CL zoning was established, and this was a by-right use, the way I'm characterizing a bank, I think, is more accurate.
Right, I can't account for, I mean, the assumption is, is that bank provision was probably put in there before maybe this occurred with regards to the technology. However, it did include without an ATM. So at least at that point, someone who was considering the potential bank use was doing so with the idea that it would have limitations.
Okay. And then the other thing that I noted about Cabrillo, and I really discovered it sort of by accident. I was wondering how I was going to leave that location when I visited it, to go to the next location, which I wanted to go visit, which was down on 15th Street, still on the east side. And I go to Santa Monica Seafood Company all the time. It's one of my favorite places. If you haven't been there, you ought to go there. Outstanding place. The only way I've ever left that place is to go back out on 17th, and it points me in the direction of the west side, which is the direction I always go. Except this time, that isn't the direction I wanted to go. And what I discovered, partly because I was standing with the applicant at their location, and saw a lot of cars on Cabrillo, lots of cars, and I thought, I bet I can get out that way. So I went out Cabrillo, down to Orange, straight across. That is a fantastic way for people to get to the east side. So I don't think of Cabrillo necessarily as a sleepy residential street, partly because I physically observed it not being that, and partly because it was a very convenient way for me to get out of that neighborhood, and I think other people have discovered the same. So that's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Andrade Villarte, do you have any? No? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Tabor, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Vivar.
Yes, sir, thank you. I do have two questions. The first one is for Ms. Halligan. I don't quite remember the specifics of the staff report, but was a, was staff able to look at a lighting plan, and would the, the security lighting be on the sort of the building faces that would be facing other adjacent or properties across the street that are residential? And I'm curious as to how much light the residents across the street might be able to see because of the security lighting, which I'm guessing would be on the entire night?
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. We did receive a draft photometric study, and I did not see any indication that the lighting would impact neighbors across the street. Should the use be approved, we would take a more detailed look at what's proposed in the rear, because those lights would be adjacent to a residential unit.
I see. In terms of the requirements, though, would that light on the rear, in the rear, need to be there, or would, could that be either foregone or changed to some kind of a, I don't know, wall-mounted light, or something that was maybe not as bright?
Commissioner Vivar, we would recommend shielding, or perhaps lowering the location in order to provide enough security lighting without having, you know, glare and light spillage on adjacent properties.
Okay, thank you. My next question is for Ms. Rosales from Transportation, if she's still online?
Yes, Commissioner Vivar, I am.
Okay, thank you. So I ran the numbers for the Institute of Transportation Engineers, daily vehicle trips, average daily, average daily trips for the site, and I used the rate that staff uses for retail cannabis, which is pharmacy with drive-through, land use code 881. And I calculated 114 average daily trips. But I took an approach that was a bit different from staff on looking at the, the average daily trips for the site. And instead of using retail uses for my calculations, because I didn't think that retail was appropriate, even though the retail, the site is technically retail, the staff report itself does mention that the site is primarily used for storage and has limited, limited customer access. So I, in fact, used the warehouse and mini warehouse, I used both, which are ITE land use codes 150 and 151. And I only got two average daily trips for those uses. So then when I credited the warehouse use that I thought was more appropriate to the storage to the site, I got 112 average daily trips, which was much higher than the 57 calculated by staff. So is there a particular reason staff didn't opt to use a warehouse ADT of one, warehouse ITE code of 150 or 151, which I thought was more appropriate to the current land usage?
Yeah, so Commissioner Vivar, the warehouse use is typically associated with an industrial-zoned type property. In addition, warehouses are typically very large in size, 10,000-plus square foot, square feet. So the IT rates is derived based on very large warehouse sites and industrial-zoned uses. Therefore, we felt that more of a commercial-type use would be more appropriate for this. In addition, we looked at what would be considered a low and a moderate type use, using our, the floor area ratio established of using our MUNI code. And based on that, the general strip retail plaza, that rate, or taking the square footage and looking at how that would fall, it would fall in the low and moderate, low to moderate use as well, which is compatible to how it's zoned, and we felt was most appropriate for this site and the business. And there is no SPA-type rate in ITE as well.
So, well, first of all, I think that the, I mean, I appreciate staff's approach to this, and I think, you know, you, staff took a very balanced approach, but I still fear that the strip plaza might itself have a similar issue to the warehouse use of 150, ITE code 150 that I use, is I think that this is just, you know, one, one use as opposed to, to multiple units that a strip commercial area would have. And so I was wondering if staff had all looked at the mini warehouse use code of 151, or some of the other following 152, 153, or so on and so forth, other warehousing type or storage type uses that might have been more similar to the, the facility, which, again, I want to emphasize, staff also mentioned in the staff report, is not functioning as a retail facility.
Commissioner Vivar, those are very great points. Thank you for looking into that. However, in ITE, even a mini warehouse type use is considered in industrial areas. So those uses are counted in industrial areas, and this isn't an industrial area as well. It's commercial. In addition, the general strip retail, it's a very, it's a very general type of IT rate for retail, and includes very small type businesses as well. So it includes a variety of businesses, commercial-type establishments in, in, of different sizes.
Understood. Thank you. That's it for me in terms of questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Vice Chair, questions?
Yes, please. Parking, I just want to clarify for my own sake. I apologize, I didn't follow. On-site, is there enough parking to meet code?
That is correct. There is adequate parking to meet code.
So this, this other site diagonally located is, is just surplus parking for their employees? They're doing that on, the applicant's electing to do that on their own, just to have extra parking?
After discussing the proposed project with staff, staff recommended that they find offsite parking for employees to reduce potential impacts on the neighborhood.
Okay.
And they were able to do so at 170 Wells.
Okay. And so provided the condition is that that be not utilized, the building on-site be not utilized during that time?
Yeah, that's correct. They wouldn't be able to use those parking stalls if another use was actually operating from that office.
Right. Okay. So, I mean, my point was that it's extra, right? That's what I was trying to figure it out. On-site, they have them, okay. Do we know the existing OC hot tub, something like that? They don't have, they just, the only entitlement on, that's running with the land is for the violin shop, right? There's no CUP right now for the hot tub operations?
That's correct. A CUP was not required for OC spas. They received a business permit for spa sales. The existing CUP on the property was for a violin repair and sales shop.
So the OC spas, is that operating, I guess it would be, it's a by-right use in that zone, so it's operating legally in terms of the use itself?
It is operating to code in many circumstances.
Okay. The sign, so this is kind of, we have a situation where, well, this is an area where it's a bunch of businesses operating out of houses, right, little bungalows? So it looks like there's going to be a new monument sign? And so with that, with the, I know that this is, we're looking at the CUP application, but the sign is going to be part of this project if it goes forward. Is that going to be, we don't have separate signage standards depending on the environment you're in. This is just going to be a commercial sign, kind of for a commercial environment? Is that's what's, what's, the sign's going to be?
So Vice Chair Toler, they would be subject to our typical sign standards. There are some specific requirements related to what can and cannot be displayed, such as a cannabis leaf, for example, but otherwise, it's subject to the same standards as any commercial sign in any commercial zone.
So it's the same kind of sign that you would get on an arterial? There's nothing that conditions it for a residential environment or anything?
It would not be conditioned for residential environment unless the planning commission wanted to add something of that nature. But the sign is under a separate permit.
Right.
And it is related to the, the linear square footage along the street frontage. So because it is a smaller structure, it would be limited in size.
Right. In the rendering, it looks like there's, the whole yard is going to be blossoming with wildflowers, and it's hard to tell what's there now. Is there, there's a fence all the way around it. Is this, is the applicant proposing to depave? Is this going to be a, I mean, visually, it's going to be, it looks like a significant change, but I would assume that's concrete back there right now, or asphalt, but do we know if that, that's part of this project?
So the applicant is proposing to redo the landscaping in the front, and then the rear would be a parking lot.
Okay. I think those are all my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Ms. Halligan, thank you for the presentation earlier. That was great. I think I will, for right now, just limit it to one question and have it center on, was there ever any discussion with the applicant about further limiting the proposed hours of operation?
Staff met with the applicant in person at the counter and over the phone several times, and they were encouraged to decrease the hours.
Okay, and what is proposed here in this application is what they chose?
That is correct, that's what they chose.
Okay, were they at any time advised differently?
We have encouraged them to continue to limit the hours of operation to be more similar to some of the other uses in the area. There's a lot of nine-to-five businesses, and there are businesses that might be open later, you know, for example, like they want to be open till eight, but those businesses tend to operate by appointment only, so they were encouraged to decrease the hours further.
Okay, so maybe I can just kind of rephrase what you just said into a bit of a question. With staff's recommendation here in this item, is the issue of the hours of operation, does that go into how you factor your recommendation for this item? That if the hours of operation were to change from what they are currently proposed at from the applicant, that that would somehow perhaps soften the recommendation?
So Chair Erith, this is the CL zone, and so this is a space where we use, we're told to use precaution. And so we did look at the hours of operation, and it is extended hours beyond what was occurring on the site, and because they don't have the ability to control traffic, they can't control the volume of customers, reducing those hours of operation would impact our analysis.
Okay, and these, this was all feedback that you gave to the applicant, which they could choose to or not to put into their application, is that correct?
That is correct, and at one point, I encouraged them to switch to a delivery-only cannabis storefront use, cannabis use.
And for public knowledge, they, I just assumed they said no?
That is correct, they didn't feel that would be viable.
Okay, all right. I think that is all for me for the moment, so thank you very much. I will go ahead and open the public hearing and ask whether the applicant or the applicant's representative is present, and to please state your name for the record, and have you read the staff report and the conditions of approval, and do you agree with them?
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name's Christopher Glue, and normally, I would have said, yes, I have read the conditions of approval, and I would love to accept them. However, in this case, we have no conditions of approval, so it is my privilege to speak to you tonight on behalf of my client, Native Garden. If you could start the slide presentation, I don't know if we have someone, oh, there it is, thank you. So thank you again to Michelle and the staff that contributed to our presentation this evening. Michelle did an excellent job of highlighting the project and addressing each aspect of our proposal. We respectfully do not agree with the staff conclusion, and our presentation will highlight the Native Garden is compatible at 167 Cabrillo. We have also made available our ownership and key staff members this evening to address any comments and concerns you may have. 167 Cabrillo is the project location off Fullerton Avenue and Cabrillo Street. This project is a passion project for the newly assembled team led by Alex Pelangian, who's here tonight. Mr. Pelangian's family are longtime business owners in the city of Costa Mesa. He is excited to build a community-oriented business model in this city and has assembled a team to accommodate this unique location. The retail storefront operation will be guided by key staff highlighted on this slide before you. The leadership team draws on a variety of backgrounds and diverse leadership perspectives. Ty Riley has developed and supervised the launch and successful operations of numerous retail locations in the state of Oregon. He specifically oversaw the operations of Good Karma Retail. This brand is embedded in residential and provided Ty with a unique experience in what it takes to work in proximity to residential. Conrad Gunderson will be a manager at this location. He brings years of cannabis-related experience and is a resident of the city of Costa Mesa. Jackie Hernandez will be in charge of compliance and has personally conducted extensive community outreach to the local community. She will be a community liaison and a conduit for local input and collaboration. If you could go to Slide 3, please, Michelle. Native Garden is committed to charity and engagement in the community. Staff will attend and support the local community organizations and actively seek relationships with local charities. The team will actively donate to local charity and will provide paid time off for employee volunteering on a monthly basis. We are committed to mitigating traffic impacts at our business and in the community. We are seeking local partners we can further this mission with. Native Garden is a proud supporter of the UFCW Union. Native Garden has executed a labor-peace agreement and looks forward to building a relationship. Community support is important to our organization to ensure that we give back to the community that supports us. If you could go to Slide 4, please, Michelle. Our company's main operational mantra is community first. We understand to be successful in the community, we must work with our neighbors to minimize impact and maximize our benefit. The city required a 500-foot radius for mailers to the surrounding community. Our team mailed flyers in Spanish and English inviting input and providing email and telephone contact information. Our street team went door-to-door to contact neighbors. The team also mailed an invitation to our community outreach. The community event was on October 19th, where we served food from a local food establishment, Napa Valley Pizza. The front grass area was utilized to welcome all passersby. We received only support at the event for our proposed storefront. If you could go to Slide 5, please, Michelle. The outreach team received an outpouring of support from neighbors in proximity. This slide reflects the location of support letters we did receive. Most importantly, we received support from all the contiguous properties. Each of the four lots provided us with a letter of support for our project. If you could go to the next slide, please. As indicated by Michelle in the presentation, Native Garden is in fact located in the CL zone that the city council specifically and intentionally included, and voters approved by 65%. Roughly two out of three Costa Mesa voters approved cannabis use in this zone. While the team is aware that proximity to residential is always a concern, we feel we have made significant modifications above and beyond any project previously vetted by staff. This slide does demonstrate how limited the CL zone is in the vicinity and equally limited around the city. The reason the applicant in this case did not choose a property at the end of the street on Newport Boulevard is that those properties did not qualify due to the fact that they were inside the prohibited buffer from sensitive use. The same property owner owns a property at the corner of Cabrillo and Newport Boulevard, but that property was buffered by sensitive use. We've highlighted this fact because it was after review and careful due diligence that this site was chosen. It was not selected randomly, and Mr. Pelangian felt this was the one property he owned that fit the voter-approved zoning map. If you go to the next slide, please. City council polled residents on key issues related to cannabis, including zones and proximity to residential. After deliberation, the city council developed an ordinance that included the CL zone and did not include a residential buffer. This slide also highlights the fact that you can find empirical evidence in the Costa Mesa city ordinance on how to achieve compatibility. Under Section 13-200.93, entitled Cannabis Retail Storefront and Non-Storefront Uses, you'll find in subsection 12, it states that for use within 200 feet of a residential zone, all exterior lighting shall be shielded and directed away from residential areas. In addition, trash facilities shall be screened from view and designed and located appropriately to minimize potential noise and odor impacts to adjacent residential areas. We have met and exceeded this standard by adding numerous additional modifications to our project. We are having, we are actually willing to have this exact language adopted into our conditions of approval. If you could go to the next slide, please. The commission has already reviewed projects that are much closer to residential than Native Garden. This graphic you have before you clearly shows the eight projects approved, all with hours of operation at full capacity till 10:00 PM. We measured the distance from our closest neighbor across Cabrillo. There is over 90 feet of separation from our front door to their front door. Additionally, there will be significant landscaping boundary as well. As you can see from the chart on the slide, there have been numerous entitlements approved by the commission that are much closer in proximity. The photo taken from the staff report for 1921 Harbor Boulevard shows residential practically touching the parking lot of an approved cannabis retail. 2332 Newport Boulevard has 20 feet separating its parking lot from a residential strip in an alley. On 17th Street, there are additional 26 restaurants that serve alcohol, seven other locations selling alcohol, with 36 additional restaurants open till 10:00 PM, all in proximity to residential. The Native Garden business plan has a significant number of modifications to accommodate this proximity to residential that none of these other projects have taken on. We are the first ones to come before this commission and offer to reduce our hours of operation after long consultation with staff, from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We're asking to come back as a condition of approval in six months for review. We've modified egress to flow away from residential onto Fullerton. We changed the front door to orient away from residential. We introduced screening landscape for the front lawn to further buffer the residential side of our building. Our lighting plan is set to control light pollution, where zero lumens will leave our property. Secured off-site parking for two employees next door. We've expanded our patrol to public areas and lead community neighborhood watch to the extent viable. We have developed multiple ways to communicate with our customers, including dropping flyers and exit bags, reminding them to be quiet on leaving, internal and external signage, utilizing security and staff to enforce this model. We also elected not to utilize home delivery to decrease intensity. If you could go to the next slide, please. This is just a graphic of some of the examples of liquor stores and restaurants that have bars in proximity to residential with extended, without extended hours, I apologize. If you could go to the next slide. This slide reflects the rendering of the proposed exterior. It shows the, some of the extensive landscaping we have implemented to reinforce the buffer. You can also see the traffic flow pattern directing egress onto Fullerton away from residential. The rendering highlights the updated structure and improved aesthetics of the future site. The improved traffic flow and modernized landscaping with the inclusion of California drought-tolerant species will be a model the city of Costa Mesa and the neighborhood can be proud of. If you go to the next slide. This is a rendering of the interior highlighting the boutique-style shopping experience with a very small square footage. If you go to the next slide, please. Native Garden will be a unique cannabis venture designed for lower customer count with increased margins to maintain business viability. Native Garden will utilize three main concepts to achieve this goal. First, Native Garden will have a curated menu based on a wellness lifestyle. Sourcing will be based on individual customer requirements. We will partner with off-site wellness providers in the local community. Native Garden will have a wellness focus in lieu of the transactional model. The appointment model will be offered as a personal shopper experience. This will allow a customer to book a reserved 30-minute time slot to work one-on-one with a wellness consultant. This will moderate intensity by scheduling during non-peak times and allowing for higher margins with less transactions and less intensity. Native Garden will also offer a buy-online and pick-up-in-store option with customer incentives to utilize. If you could go to the next slide, please. Native Garden has committed substantial resources to modification of the project when working with staff over the last year. During the long journey to this date, the team has exhaustively sought feedback from staff. Each time we received direction from staff, the team went back to the drawing board and addressed each and every concern. Staff indicated that traffic flow should not dump onto Cabrillo, so we redesigned the location to direct traffic away from Cabrillo. When staff raised the concern of the front entrance facing residential, the team went back to the drawing board, redesigned the entire plan, and immediately reoriented the front door away from residential, and added landscaping to the front yard to increase the buffer. When staff brought up the concern of the hours of operation, we indicated them we would shave four hours off the schedule by opening two hours later and closing two hours early. To address the comments that were made about the hours of operation, we, in those conversations, we met with staff in person in multiple meetings. During those meetings, we did bring up the issue of a additional cannabis store being about 100 feet away from our location. We indicated to them that if we were marketing and driving business to our facility, people would often go next door to shop after our hours of operation, which would limit the viability of our store as a successful business model. Native Garden also elected not to include the home delivery to reduce intensity. When they talked of parking being an issue, we felt we were parked to code, and we felt that we have enough parking to meet the demands of this location. However, we went and secured off-site parking on a contiguous property at 170 Wells Place to further reduce intensity. We conducted numerous outreach events to understand the community's concerns. We conducted numerous door-knocking campaigns and the outreach event. The primary concern seemed to focus on the daycare center located next door, which will in fact no longer be there. If you could go to the next slide, please. Native Garden will be a true neighborhood store. The emphasis will be on ways to lower impact and increase collaboration with the local community. Carrying products oriented towards wellness, planned retreats for customers, focusing on deeper customer education, and emphasizing a good neighbor policy are just some of the concepts that Native Garden will deploy as a unique cannabis retail store. If you could go to the next slide, please, Michelle. Native Garden brings experience from working within residential areas and successfully operating cannabis enterprises. Mr. Pelangian recruited Ty Riley specifically for his background running retail stores in Oregon for several shops embedded in residential areas. Native Garden believes they can work collaboratively with the surrounding business and residential community to be a positive addition. Commissioners and staff, I would like to introduce you to Mr. Ty Riley, who is here tonight, and would like to share some of his experience with you.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. And yeah, we successfully have been opening residential houses right in Oregon for about eight years successfully, and, you know, the feedback from the community has been tremendous. We've done outreach programs like going to a cat shelter and painting the inside and the outside. It's pretty awesome to see all the people come together and bond in those moments. When we're on the coast, we actually have done coast, beach cleanups together, where even customers join us, staff goes, and everybody gets to mingle, and we actually meet pretty unique individuals. One of them was actually a glassblower, and we had him come to the shop. He brought his items with him that he glassblown himself. It was a cool, little, unique thing that we were able to sponsor back at the, at the store. Another one was this woman, her name was Jessica, actually. She had crochets, she had a good little following in Salem, Oregon, and it was extremely successful with her as well. And and it was extremely successful with her as well. And it's interesting, you know, when you open these houses, it's almost like you don't even have to go out there to recruit people. They just start to come to you. They know that you're opening. They see that signage. You bring them on inside and once we find the staff that we need, we we offer refer friend programs, good incentives for them to bring in like good people to the to the team. And yeah, we always like to be good neighbors. We want to make sure that John next door knows the manager's name, knows the security guard's name. And what happened recently, actually, is local law enforcement came to visit us and asked us about, oh, what is different forms or what have you guys seen with intoxication? What are these products? And it was actually a cool experience for all of us to to be involved in. With that said, I'd like to introduce resident of Costa Mesa, Conrad Gunderson.
Hello. Um, sorry. Hello, Honorable Commission and staff. Thank you for your work on this project. I'm a resident of Costa Mesa for the past five years. I live on the crossroads between Eighteenth Street and Placentia. For the last decade, I've worked in the culinary industry and worked in the cannabis field. I was brought to this project to be a shop manager. I live close enough where I'll be able to ride my one-wheel or bike to work, which would reduce my carbon footprint. I'm able. I'm able to. I'm very excited to be able to work in my own community and work closely with the neighbors and to provide very unique cannabis experience. I see this location on Cabrillo as a perfect location to launch the new cannabis retail experience. I planted my roots in the city and plan to live there for quite some time. I envision Native Garden to be a positive contributor to the city that I call home and specifically to our surrounding neighborhood. I will make myself available as a community liaison by providing my telephone and email to all the neighbors. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Michelle, if you could go to the next slide. I encourage commission to ask questions of Mr. Riley because he does have this unique experience. As you can see, those previous units are actually embedded in residential operating out of former homes. This is actually a high-level view of some of the locations and you can see the two spots that we've highlighted are are really concentrated into residential communities. So Mr. Riley, for years, has been working with surrounding neighbors and addressing concerns. And quite frankly, you couldn't talk to a person who's worked in cannabis in such close proximity to residential. There's not a lot of people who have had this unique experience. If you could go to the next slide. A lot of the best practices and key learnings that we're going to deploy at this location come from Mr. Riley's experience. And this slide really just kind of goes over the high level of the reasons, what the challenges were for them in Oregon and trying to overcome and achieve compatibility and operate in these residential buildings and some of the strategies with marketing and integration they used. If you could go to the next slide, please. This is just a picture of one-seventy Wells for commissioners who may not have had an opportunity to see this spot. This is where we secured the off-site parking. Two of those spots would be for employees. One would be for an administrative personnel that could work either in the unit or at our site, depending on how we work that out with Michelle and staff. If you could go to the next slide, please. This slide, I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the other permitted uses by right. We asked the commission to consider the comparison to what one-six-seven Cabrillo could be. The permitted uses by right, as contained in the land use matrix, include a vape shop meeting specific requirements, a health and beauty store like Alta, mobile phone shops like T-Mobile, Verizon, gift stores like Where's the Party?, intensive Beehive uses with late and extended hours, sports retail and other uses with later hours of operation and increased intensity. All of these appear to be by right uses that would extend the hours of operation, increase intensity. Mr. Palangian is renovating the property and a new use will be at this location. We are confident that a cannabis entitlement with specific conditions of approval, a six-month review and a conditional use permit is the best option to allow for community input. I know that Commissioner. One of the commissioners alluded to the the banking model or staff. And you know, I I understand that there is a comparison to the banking model. Quite honestly, we look at this. There's a lot of different uses that could be at this location. And all of them increase intensity over what we believe cannabis would be at this spot. If you could go to the next slide, please. We are aware that staff did not include conditions of approval in the agenda packet. So we did type up a handout with findings that come directly from other approved projects with similar characteristics. This slide highlights the projects we extracted conditions from that have been previously vetted by this commission and staff. If you could go to the next slide. And that's it. Thank you, Honorable Commission and staff for all your hard work. We're excited to answer all questions you may have and look forward to working in the community of Costa Mesa. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Glue and Mr. Riley and Mr. Gunderson. I appreciate your time up at the podium and for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? I'm just looking for the microphone to turn on. Commissioner Rojas, any questions of the applicant?
None, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Zick. No questions. Commissioner Andrade-Vigarta.
Yeah, I would love to hear about your experience in these other locations that are in residential areas. A lot of the feedback that we've heard is concerns about, you know, being close to residential and families, kids, the traffic it would cause. So what was what's been your experience in these other locations? How how has that shown up?
Sure, I can start off the conversation because I speak to Mr. Riley a lot and then I'll let him jump in just because I like to have most of the attention. So Mr. Riley had shared with me a lot of stories about his experience in Oregon that, you know, obviously, there's a lot more foot traffic. They have off-site parking that kind of wraps around the corner, so they have pedestrians that flow in. And I asked him, I said, well, have you had a lot of complaints from surrounding neighbors because the customers are walking by the residence, they're leaving, they're kind of out of sight? And he indicated to me that, no, they actually have all their staff have cell phone numbers and everything for all the surrounding neighbors. If there's ever an issue, security will address it by going back, looking at the exterior cameras, finding out what time a customer left, if they were loud, abusive, littered on any property, did anything that was inappropriate. They'll talk to that person and eventually, if they don't comply, then they would be no longer allowed to visit the store. So here we actually have parking onsite, so we can control that and moderate it to a much larger degree. We also have security staff that will be trained to also operate as a traffic flagger and help monitor and address traffic to make sure it stays on its proper flow pattern. And we also believe with this appointment model that we'll really be able to keep the trips per hour to a minimum. But I'll let Mr. Riley speak. Maybe he has some more experience being on the front lines.
I mean, Chris nailed it on the head, but it's very organic. You know, you get there. We get to meet everybody and they actually. Our feedback has actually been pretty positive. They come to the store. They want to try something new. Because it's not. It's not scary. It was. It's been positive. And after doing this numerous times, it's it's been a great experience, especially for me and and even watching how 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 the staff has grown and the stores. But yeah, Chris basically covered covered that.
You know, now I would also add that, you know, we're not under the illusion that there aren't people who have complaints and do want to address the fact that there is cannabis in their community. Usually, when we have an opportunity to open and they see the cleanliness, they see the professionalism, they see how it really is a lesser impact on the community around them, they tend to be a lot more understanding and appreciative of what we're trying to accomplish. And what's a little bit unique about our ask to you tonight is not that we're saying put us there permanently, allow us to operate and, you know, whatever happens, happens. We're asking you. We're seeking your input. We're seeking collaboration with you and we're seeking collaboration with the community. If there are problems, we want to address them. If there is an issue with us being open till eight P. M. and the neighbors say, hey, look, between seven and eight, there is an intensification of traffic over here and it's your store that's causing it, then we want to come back and find a solution. If that solution is reducing hours, that would be a solution potentially. If that is finding other parking options, increasing our customer incentives for pedestrian, bike and other forms of transportation. There's lots of ways to work around issues. If there's noise, if anything comes up, those are the things we want to work with you on. This isn't an ask to be a permanent fixture in this community. It's an ask to be an asset to this community with your guidance, with your support and with your collaborative input and of course, the communities.
Vice Chair.
Thank you. Could you tell us a little bit about delivery?
Sure.
How that's going to work?
It's not.
It's not going to work?
Easiest question of the night. We are not asking to do delivery. In our research on delivery, it becomes an intensification. If you're only serving a couple of customers, it's something you can do and you can moderate and you can achieve if it's a necessity. The reality is that our model is going to be appointment-based. If we have to do Zooms or something like that to achieve someone who might not be mobile or is unable to come to the store, that's the experience we're driving for. Think of it as a personal shopper concierge. We're going to work with patients when they come in. We're going to design models that work for them. We're only going to carry certain select products. And when they come in for their consultation, we're going to work to achieve something that may be a unique cannabis experience for them. We're going to have follow-up. We call, we email, we ask if it worked for sleep or for anxiety or stress or whatever the concern may be. We're going to use that to help also decrease intensity. And delivery just ends up being a in-and-out, cars coming back and forth, picking up product, taking product out. And we don't want that for the neighborhood. I think that would be an intensification of use.
And so for deliveries of the product to the site, not necessarily people ordering online, would that be a couple of times a week and a?
It would be something that would be almost unnoticed because, quite frankly, it would take maybe once every two weeks a delivery of products. And the delivery vehicle that we would utilize for that would be a very small vehicle. We don't need a big delivery truck. It would be virtually unnoticed.
Okay. Say business is good and would there be plans for expansion in this site?
No. No, this the idea of this model is to be a premium shopping experience with very high margins. And this model, as we've based it, trying to develop the plan is going to be that it has kind of a cap, a ceiling. It's not going to grow beyond its capacity. So if it does grow, it would be a franchise-type model outside of this location.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Taber, any questions of the applicant? No, okay. Commissioner Vivar.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I do have a question. So thank you for your presentation, very thorough. However, I do want to touch on on few two things you mentioned. So you at some point in one of your slides talked about the distances between previously approved retail cannabis locations and residential. And you measured that from the in one of the cases from the parking lot to the residential. I just want to bring your attention that the distances are measured from the premises, which are considered the building footprint. So the parking isn't parking isn't considered in that measurement. But if we if we will measure parking, I wanted to ask, what is the distance distance between your parking and or your proposed parking, rather, and the residential use that I believe is backs up to your property, the residential use along Fullerton?
That's incorrect. We actually do not have any residential that is anywhere near our parking. Our parking is actually even further away from residential. So you would exceed a hundred and ten feet to get to our parking. All the buildings that are located on our property are all business slash residential. Unless I've been misinformed about Conrad's property, who wrote us a letter of support and is strongly supporting us being located next to him.
Right, but that is still a residential use. Am I correct?
Not that I understood.
Okay. I.
I don't want to interrupt staff. I think they wanted to chime in. I might be mistaken.
Sure. Oh, no, nothing. You may go ahead, Mr. Trapp.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. The adjacent property is residential. And the letter that we that I believe that Mr. Glue is referring to was a letter in support, not because they're planning on developing. It was related to issues they've had with the existing tenant. So from a planning perspective, our measurement is that the parking would be less than five feet from the existing home.
Okay, right. Thank you. And the other thing I'd like to say is really more a comment than a question. I'd like to it seems like you did your due diligence, Mr. Glue, on the previously approved applications that have come before us, which I commend you for. But I do want to draw to your attention to a project along Harbor and Adams that in fact did have reduced hours of operation. So if this were approved, this wouldn't be the the first such site with reduced hours of operation, just keep in mind. So that's it for me, Mr. Chairman. I defer back to you.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate the presentation. I have no questions at this time. But I may. Thank you. You may have a seat. At this point of the meeting, I will go ahead and open this up for public comments. If you would like to speak on this item, please approach one of the two podiums. You will have three minutes to make your comments and at the one-minute mark, you're going to hear a little chime. And at the end of those three minutes, the mic's going to go ahead and turn off. So just please be aware of that. You should see the timer on your prompters here. If you're on Zoom, use the raised hand option. If you're joining the meeting on your phone and like to speak, please press star nine when called upon. With that, we will go ahead and start to my left and Anna's right. And Anna, I assume that you're managing it. Okay, great. Yes, ma'am.
Where do I turn? Is it on? Okay.
Yes, it is.
Hi, my my name is Janice Hale and I live at one-six-six Cabrillo Street, so directly across the street from the proposed cannabis site. I am not for this at all. Obviously, I have three children. Two of them have autism spectrum disorder. And there is just going to be such an increase in traffic. Staff already said that, that it's not conducive to have that, this type of business there. And also, we've already had, I've seen in the last, it's been less than a year, three accidents. There's a lot of accidents on that corner where cars have been totaled, one of them being mine. I had bought a minivan two weeks old parked in front of my house in that corner, exactly where they want to put it. There's so many accidents. Boom, hit my car, went into my yard and totaled it. And I just think it's wrong. We're not Oregon. We're not Portland. Are we going to make Eastside Costa Mesa Portland? Is that what we're trying to do? I don't. I don't. I don't see that. And you've got fourteen other businesses already approved cannabis shops. Why does it have to go in a residential neighborhood? I understand that there's mixed use, but I also know what mixed-use businesses are there and nothing like this. Nothing that the traffic that this will bring. The spa business doesn't. It's like it's a storage unit. There's no business right now. I can't even imagine the upset that this is going to bring to our neighborhood. So I would just politely ask that you don't approve this. And I thank you for your time.
My name is Wendy Samo. I live at one-forty Cabrillo and ironically, one-forty East Seventeenth Street is right across the road from me, which is the gym, which is open from five A. M. till ten P. M. And it starts pumping its base at five A. M. every day. So I don't see how this dispensary is going to pump base into our community like this gym. And also, there was a dispensary right next door to our little trailer park, got busted a couple of times. And there was no increased flow of traffic. They had lots of people in and out, but you couldn't tell it on the streets one hundred percent. I mean, I've lived there since January twenty twenty, you know, but there is definitely a gym right across the road from where they're going to open this. The hours of operation are five A. M. till ten P. M. So if they can pump base at five A. M., we can definitely buy some marijuana at seven A. M. Okay? I one hundred percent. I 100% support this. It will not increase our traffic. It's not going to, I mean, 20 to 30 cars go into that gym every hour. They have to come out, they have to go in. You know, that's more traffic than this dispensary is going to create 100%, okay? So that's my input on it. Have a great night.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Mario Robles. I'm the co-owner at 152 Cabrillo Street. I've been a co-owner approximately 30 years, and we currently, the last five years, we've had some renters in there. But remarkably, in those 30 years there, I cannot recall a major emergency, a life-or-death situation, 9/11 calls, or anything like that. So remarkably, Cabrillo is a calm, quiet street, except for the traffic. So with that, having said that, I'd like to credit the Costa Mesa Police Department, the city council, and maybe the planning commission for 30 years of calmness there. But it's been a good experience, with one exception. About 10 years ago, there was a dispensary that opened up at 128, 130, 132 Cabrillo. And it was the post-purchase behavior that became an issue. They would buy their marijuana, and they'd go down to the parking lot at Santa Monica Seafood Market, and that's where they would be smoking marijuana in their car, on the truck, truck bed of a truck. And I went over a couple times, because my son was saying, hey, they're smoking pot. He was 14 at the time. And I wanted to ask, how do you know what pot smells like? But I guess that's another subject. So I went over a couple times, and they were teenagers, and they listened to me, and they laughed. But one of them got a little bit confrontational, and I heard my son talking, and I said, this is not right. So that's the only experience I have with the dispensary. I didn't hear anything about post-purchase behavior, and that's what I'm referring to. There is some studies on THC and its impact on cognitive, cognition, on decision-making, critical thinking skills. That's what I saw post-purchase in the parking lot. That's my concern. I didn't hear anything about behavior post-purchase. I didn't hear anything about behavior while under the influence. That's my concern. To have a dispensary there, to have that behavior coming up, is a concern of mine. So in closing, I, I'm objecting to the, to the dispensary. I think we need to consider the post-purchase behavior, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Hello, everyone. My name is Patrick Martin. I'm a proud Costa Mesa resident and homeowner in Costa Mesa for 14 years. I'm a friend of the applicant, Alex. I'm also a friend of the property owner, Jerry. I could tell from personal experience, they're both very good operators. I work in the area, a mile or so from the Cabrillo project. And I also work out at the gym across the street. I just wanted to say I'm very excited for the project, as it'll bring more job opportunities to the area. It'll give a nice facelift to the property, which could definitely use it. It'll also give me safe access for my medicine from a local business operator that I could trust. I'm very excited for the future of Costa Mesa and the direction we are heading. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Andrew. I've been a resident at Costa Mesa for 11 years. I'm a cannabis advocate and industry professional, and I believe that Native Garden would provide an overall positive impact, creating jobs, tax revenue, and essential services for those seeking alternatives to traditional medicine. As mentioned previously, this is not intended to be a large retail operation. This is intended to be a service to the community with a more holistic approach. From working in the industry for over four years, the perceived negative impact is often overstated. The reality is far more positive and less impactful than other businesses. For example, the post-behavior, post-purchase behavior that was just mentioned, there's a bar with walking distance. I myself would go to World Cup games a couple months ago. They were opening at 7:00 a.m. in the morning. I had to park on Cabrillo on that street. It was packed. They met capacity before 8:00 a.m. in the morning, all day open. They have live music at night. I don't see how that can be less impactful, or how the cannabis store could be more impactful than the HARP would be. No hate to the HARP, great establishment. But Proposition 64 passed six years ago, and cities throughout the state have not fully recognized the positive potential of this industry. We should not have to drive to Santa Ana, Long Beach, or sketchy areas of the city when we could be supporting our local community in our neighborhoods. I'd like to thank and recognize the commission and the staff for their time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Catherine Charouse, and I run a nonprofit art, music, and yoga program for children. Initially, when I heard of the proposed project at 167 Cabrillo, I was in complete opposition due to its close proximity to the enrichment program that serves the youth of our community. We have since closed our business and are in the process of relocating. I have had the pleasure to have several conversations with the team of Native Garden and believe them to be professional businessmen who would make a great addition to the city of Costa Mesa.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christine. I live in Irvine, and I currently work in Costa Mesa. I'm looking forward to being able to shop locally after work, or even on my lunch break, instead of having to go to Santa Ana. I've driven past the proposed location on 167 Cabrillo on many occasions. I think it'll be a great spot for a brand-new site, and it will improve the appearance of that current corner. I've visited a few cannabis stores throughout California and Nevada, and many of them are like by residential areas. The stores are well-maintained, and the neighborhoods feel safe. I imagine this new shop would have a similar effect. I don't see any impending detriment to the community. I feel like there's a huge misconception that cannabis dispensaries bring about unwanted behavior in people, but I find that to be very far from the truth. I've only had positive experiences going to these stores. The buildings and properties are clean and always look nice. Staff are friendly and professional, and all the customers are respectful to one another. In my experience, I have never seen any disruptive behavior from anyone. Also, I do feel safe knowing there's a guard on-premise. I think this is a great location and another good business for Costa Mesa. I support, and I will be excited to be a customer when it opens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Hello, staff. Thank you very much for tonight, and we appreciate your feedback and respect everything that you guys believe. And I just wanted to come up here and speak a couple words in regards to this project. My name's Alex Blangin. My family, we've been in the area for, doing business for about 50 years. And really, I mean, I, it's scary how business changes. Everything, no one has the answers of what's going to happen tomorrow. But I do firmly believe that cannabis needs to be controlled. It cannot be black market like it has been. It's been circulating in our neighborhoods over the last several decades, and I think now we have an opportunity to capture it as a viable service for our community through employment, revenues. And quite frankly, I'm looking forward to just making the property beautiful again. The existing use there right now is really, it's not, it's not anything to look at. So we would appreciate the opportunity to add some value to the community, the commercial area that is there, and I think it'll be beneficial to everyone in Costa Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Hello, everyone. My name is Andy. I'm a lifelong Orange County resident. I work in the city of Costa Mesa. I'm a cannabis user for medical reasons, and I'm very happy that the city has adopted retail shops. I've visited this location many times, and it seems like a great location for a shop. It's near my work, and I think it would be a good addition after listening to presentation and seeing all the things owners are doing to improve the site. I've attended many of the meetings before, and I don't recall any applicant offering to close early and open late, even though that would affect the business. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Julie Calzada. I am currently working in Costa Mesa, and having Native Gardens on Cabrillo would save me time and money, because I wouldn't have to deal with the inconvenience of having to drive to the Santa Ana or Long Beach areas. As a mother of two, I feel safer in Costa Mesa, and I hope you guys approve this.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Yeah, hi. My name is Andy Cohen, C-O-N, no H, C-O-N. I've been living in Cabrillo Street for one past 32 years. I have a friend who runs the store, OG Spa, Heart Doctor Cozy, at 167 Cabrillo Street, and his name is Ryan Abby. He's not a good friend, he's not a good businessman to deal with. So I wouldn't recommend working with him. Only know he's a dumb, dumb friend, is really a retard, a smoker, trying to drink beer, and he's a real stupid businessman in my life, so I'd quite like to work with him because of that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, commissioners and city staff. My name is Derek Smith. I'm the political director of the United Food and Commercial Workers Local 324. Since the inception of the discussion of how best to bring cannabis retail in Costa Mesa, we believe that job quality has always been a key priority in the city's vision. And based upon the track record of the cannabis operations in other cities, this applicant more than fulfills this criteria, not simply adhering to the minimum standards of the law, but of going above and beyond to provide good jobs. Now, I do understand that, based upon the staff report, that job quality isn't really in question here, and there are concerns about the adaptability of this use with local community standards. And to that, I would offer my observation, that this applicant has done more mitigations in its projects vis-à-vis hours and changes of ingress, negress, and design modifications than I'm accustomed to seeing. And secondly, you have an applicant that has demonstrated that they have an ongoing community partnership based upon local outreach in this particular case and on past practice in existing projects. So as we all accept the mutual responsibility to establish this new industry in Costa Mesa in a methodical and thoughtful way, we have a vested interest in ensuring that the operators of good character are established early to set the tone. And this, I would ask that you factor in this applicant's prior history and its demonstrated willingness to provide community benefits above and beyond what has been required in your decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Harrington. Been a Costa Mesa resident for five years, Orange County resident for over a decade now. I think that this would be good for the city. It would offer job opportunities, as well as opportunities for us to benefit from the taxes that we can impose, that we can reinvest into the city. People are going to be smoking this stuff either way. They're going to go to Santa Ana if they want to, to get it, and they're just going to come back to Costa Mesa and smoke it. I think that this is an opportunity for jobs, for people to get their medicine more easily, and an opportunity for us to reinvest or, sorry, repurpose taxes back into the city to benefit it further. I also don't see a huge difference. It's right next to Seventeenth and Triangle Square, which I spent a lot of time in in my younger years. People are stumbling drunkenly throughout there all the time. So I don't think that this would be detrimental in comparison to that, quite honestly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Erica. I am a current resident of Irvine, and I currently work in the city of Costa Mesa. I was very thrilled to hear about this proposed location on Cabrillo and its close proximity to my office. The closest cannabis retail stores that I currently frequent are in Santa Ana. I have shopped at almost all the retail dispensaries in the city of Santa Ana and even a Hannibal in Los Angeles. I will be honest in sharing that initially, I didn't feel the most comfortable stepping foot inside a dispensary, but having been a loyal cannabis user for 10 years now, I can confidently say that I look forward to shopping for my cannabis at these retail shops. Every single experience I've had has been nothing but pleasant. I am thoroughly impressed with the professionalism I've seen at these dispensaries. Shops that I visit are extremely well-kept and inviting. I most often shop at these locations after work during evening hours, and have felt safe with the security guards inside the premise and armed guards patrolling the exterior of the building and parking lot. I drive by the proposed location almost every day on my way to pick up lunch and have seen the site numerous times. I truly believe that this is a great location and property for a cannabis retail store. I believe that this location will add value to this neighborhood and the city of Costa Mesa. I look forward to being a loyal patron. Thank you for your time and for allowing me this opportunity to share my thoughts this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Marianne, and I've been a resident in Orange County for a long time. I believe the benefits of this business would create jobs for construction workers, budtenders, maintenance work, et cetera. This business would also benefit not only recreational consumers, but medical patients who have diseases and can't find a dispensary due to the lack of locations available. The marijuana business brings in incredible profit margins and consistent consumers, making the marijuana business the modern gold rush. With profits and taxes, the city can improve low-income communities' roads and create sustainable jobs without incarcerations or raids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Chris, and I actually work for Alex's father. And if that tells me anything, he's had a business for 51 years. So Alex's father is teaching him something, being in Costa Mesa for as long as he has. I've lived here for 15 years, and, I mean, he has been taught how to keep a business going. He has one shop, one thing. I've met his second customer he's ever had in 51 years. We have people that come back, day after day after day after day, year after year after year. And with that, I know Alex has been brought up that same way, with that same ethic of how to run a business. He's not doing it just to make money or anything like that. He wants the business to thrive. He wants Costa Mesa to thrive. That's why he's here. That's why we're all here. And I just hope everything goes well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Virginia Gutierrez. I just wanted to say that this project would probably be the best out of all the projects that came in here today, because the benefits of this, it would be safer marijuana consumption. The area would be safer, there's security guards, there's no people coming in, like, to check and raid us, like how one of the other persons said that they saw another shop get raided around there. This would be a legal shop. This would be a unique shop for the neighborhood. Nobody's going to feel, like, intimidated, or, like, it's going to be a neighborhood thing, you know? It's not going to be something where they're just going to be watching everything happen and not be part of the movement of the marijuana dispensary, you know? Everyone's going to be included. I feel like it's probably one of the best positive ways to avoid the taboo with marijuana industry. And yes, we do have traffic. It's California. We live here. We're probably one of the best states to be having cannabis. And I would just say, this is a goal for me. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name's Diana Vedder. I would like to state, although I'm not against cannabis, I just don't think this location is the best spot for it. I've been born and raised in Orange County all my life, and I've been in Costa Mesa probably about 15 years now. I currently live directly across the street over at 162 Cabrillo Street. Cabrillo is a very high, high-traffic area. A lot of cars will cut down Cabrillo to get to Newport Boulevard. Along with that, they do speed as well. The corner from Wells, I'm sorry, the corner from Fullerton to Cabrillo is also a blind corner. So when you're turning from Fullerton onto Cabrillo, you can't see left or right, which has caused many, many accidents, one of which was my neighbor's car. And I want to say, at least this year, I know of at least three accidents alone that have totaled all the cars involved. Additionally, as knowledgeable as the leadership team is for the cannabis place, I don't believe they'll be able to control the traffic. They mentioned that the time slots are going to be 30-minute time increments, as well as just picking the cannabis up. This is going to result in a lot of in-and-outs. The, I believe, proposed entry is going to be off Cabrillo. Just maybe 20 feet later, you're going to have Fullerton Street right there and Wells Street on the other side of the block. So you're going to have even more traffic turning into that location. And then when they exit Fullerton, you're going to have the HARP traffic, the gym traffic, and everything else. It's going to increase the traffic and the accidents. There are no stop signs. There are no stop signs. There are no speed bumps, just a lot of traffic and a lot of cars. You say you want what's best for the community. If that's so, why would you force a daycare out of a residential area in order to put up a cannabis storefront? I believe that ultimately the storefront will just result in a negative impact for all the homeowners and all the residents that live in that area. As someone else stated, there was a cannabis location down the street. It was raided. The police were there all the time. You also had a lot of cars that would just stop in the middle of the street just to run out, pick up their prescription and then run back in, which caused a lot more traffic. So that's it. Again, I'm not for it. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Chair. Congratulations to our new chair and, um, the rest of the commission, planning commission. I'm Catherine Young. I own my home. I call it my home, even though I don't live there, because I used to live there from 1971 to 1985. It's still my home because my tenants are my family. They have a year and a half old child and the home next to me at 154 has a one and a half year old child. Next to me has the two, uh, three teenagers. And we will be impacted because of the increased traffic business. And I want to bring the commissioner to, the general plan describes seven commercial districts in Costa Mesa. Cabrillo Street is along the Seventeenth Commercial Corridor. The general plan states that the Seventeenth Street Commercial Corridor is to service local residents only. Doesn't talk about other workers from other, um, towns. It's for local residents. The Seventeenth Street Corridor does not need many retail cannabis stores for its local residents. We already have one on 170 Seventeenth Street that will be probably about, their parking lot is about 300 feet from our front door. And so that will also be activity. And then to continue, under the general plan for the Seventeenth Street Commercial Corridor, there should just be a few shops because that's all local residents need. This corridor with many retail cannabis stops, because there's one going to go up on Orange Avenue, there's one in 124 Seventeenth Street. So it'll end up that we'll have a busy, uh, street like Harbor Boulevard and that will not comport with the general plan. And also the general plan says that the residential neighborhood should be conductive to pedestrian traffic. With a busy retail cannabis store on Cabrillo, a resident street, this would not create, this would create too much traffic for safe pedestrian and bicycles. The retail store...
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your comment. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak on this item? Please come forward and if you can, line up on both sides, please. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening to each commissioner and my neighbors. I want to address the planning department's negative comments. First, almost all the houses on Cabrillo Street are rentals, which are considered a business. 162 Cabrillo has a house and a converted garage that are a rental business. And only this one property owner expressed concerns that cannabis would deter renters. And this is just not true. Legal cannabis is so strictly regulated by city, state and federal governments that they actually make better neighbors than most any other business. Because of one owner's concern for their future renters, planning wants to, wants the operating hours to decrease and further limit the hours to deliveries only. This is not only limiting their ability to compete with other like-kind businesses, but will cause them to lose customers in the restricted hours. Second, planning suggests the cannabis customers will somehow create noise. This is not possible as the customers will be inside the building and the cars will be at a snail's pace using the parking lot and Fullerton Street. This cannabis company is a perfect noise buffer. Third, planning indicates the customers will increase traffic on Cabrillo. The bulk of customers will not use Cabrillo as there is no left turn to or from Cabrillo off Newport Boulevard, which is the main street to arrive at this location. A GPS will direct traffic to Seventeenth Street and Fullerton, not to Cabrillo. The front door will be walled off and the customers will be out of sight. Most businesses in the area are retail. And the current spa business has been a retail store for over 15 years with three salespeople. I have never experienced any, that's three minutes? Oh, I'm sorry. I have never experienced any non-compatibility with retail in 33 years at my property, which is contiguous to the property in question. This cannabis company will fix all the current property issues and the code violations that I have not had time to list that are a detriment to the public's health, safety and welfare. They will clean up the property in question, correct all current code violations, add much-needed security, be a good neighbor, help reestablish the noise buffer zone we were zoned for, and they will never be intrusive to any neighbor. Our neighborhood deserves this upgrade, so I am respectfully asking each commissioner to please vote yes, as this would be such an added asset to our neighborhood and such an added income to all the neighborhoods. This is a win-win for...
That's three minutes. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak? Come forward. Seeing no one, Anna, do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have anyone on phone?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see here. I'm going to close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any further questions for the applicant? We'll, we'll get to that for rebuttal. Commissioners, do you have any further questions for the applicant? Commissioner Rojas?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant have any closing remarks or comments?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. So I wanted to start off just taking some of the comments that were, Commissioner Var, I want to speak to your comments. Directly because I did have the opportunity to go visit this location numerous times and I'm actually quite intimately familiar as I too am also very familiar with the current occupant as I've known him personally for over a decade. I can assure you that anyone that's informed you that that's a warehouse is sorely mistaken. It is a retail operation. The spa business has a retail showroom there that's outside with a tent over it and there are spas stacked up about 25, 30 feet high. They process transactions there and then they load the hot tubs onto trucks and park them out in the road and then deliver them off to customers. It is their retail. It is currently their only retail storefront. So any comparison to a warehouse use is wholly inaccurate. There was some comments about accidents on the corner by community members and we'd like to be an asset to address that. Right now, the occupant of that spa business is certainly not deploying any strategies whatsoever to reduce the traffic or potential accidents in the area. I don't mean that as a negative comment on his part, but what I'm suggesting is our business will provide 24-hour security. There will be security personnel outside that will be able to observe traffic, will be a physical presence and a deterrent to people that are speeding and coming around that corner when they see a security guard standing there, having a physical presence. We're also willing to work with these community members who spoke out and come up with ideas. We're willing to help fund projects like putting in rumble strips, doing things like putting in traffic control measures, coming back collaboratively with the community members and petitioning the planning commission to find solutions to the traffic issues over there. As a matter of fact, the gentleman who runs the hot tub business actually had his car totaled over there while it was parked on the street. This isn't something we just heard tonight and we've asked the people on those locations. We asked Lorraine. She's a property owner there. We asked Conrad, who I confirmed with Lorraine, fully supports our project. We spoke with Katie, who's been there for a long time. We asked her about traffic. We spoke with Mr. Abby, who's been there for 20 years. We spoke with the property owners and they all have ideas about how to reduce traffic. So we are here to be a part of the solution. We're not here to be someone who's going to create problems. We're here to help address those problems. Another thing that came up was that one of the folks that spoke tonight indicated that we forced the daycare out or that the commission forced the daycare out because, to allow cannabis. I won't speak to any of that, other than the fact that I will say that our entitlement was never going to open if they were there and we had no impact on that whatsoever. So it was not us that forced anyone off of that property. And we've dealt with the issue of displacement with each tenant, specifically the tenant that's at the location we're currently at. The same property owner also owns his real showroom that sits on Newport Boulevard that he's just used for storage and warehouse purposes, which is actually a retail storefront that he's going to be moving to. You know, I just want to say this and I'll wrap it up, but this project is led by Costa Mesa legacy business owners with Costa Mesa pride. Give them a shot to prove they are the right fit and I'll rest on that. I don't know if Jim has any additional comments, but...
Thank you, Jim Fitzpatrick, proud Costa Mesa resident. I just wanted to kind of walk us down a different fact pattern that I don't think much of this, some of this discussion revolved around the fact that city council did develop an ordinance. They discussed it amongst themselves. They polled the residents on should we do this in the CL zone and the answer was yes. Should we have a buffer to residential? And the answer was no. Respectfully, I think your job is to implement the intent of the city council and the will of the people. If anybody has an issue with that, you should go back to the, you know, your boss, right? Which is the city council and have that discussion. But don't take it out on an applicant who did everything that they can to figure out how to make this work. We saw in the ordinance, it contemplated proximity to residential. We've approved seven projects even closer, more closer to residential. I don't understand why we don't compare, the constant comparison is to what's been there for the last 30 years, right? And not what could be there by right. You saw on one of the pages in our slides, we could have a retail shop there, open 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And it's not a thing you can do about it, right? If they become a nuisance, maybe, but you can't stop it from being there. So shouldn't that be the comparison? Instead of, you know, a 1970 sleepy use where many members in the community do want to see that change? What other businesses going to come in there and spend the kind of money to revitalize and modernize this property? So I just, you know, the findings, man, for the 14 that you've approved, they're all exactly the same. And I, I scratch my head and I can't explain to my clients why another property 150 feet away, open from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, has completely different findings of fact. Do they not drive on Cabrillo, right? The hours of operations, Santa Monica Seafood's open until 8:00. This cannabis business in proximity is open until 10 o'clock at night. The HARP is open until 2:00 AM. The GEM is open, open different hours. Those should be reflected in your considerations. So, you know, the findings are exactly the same for most, every project. The first one was customized. I hope we did provide you some findings of fact that we think you can look for. And you can take every other standard condition of approval that has, has been imposed on every other application that doesn't, and then add to it, right? Reduced hours of operations, all these different things that we have proposed, come back in six months, right, to no other project. Give this, give this opportunity a shot. I think that's what's the right thing to do. I think it's what the council and the voters intended you to do and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Commissioners, do you have any further questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner Tabor.
And Michelle, since it's been like an hour, can you remind me the bullet points of why you guys don't want this? You're like recommending to, what do you say, not approve it? Just like bullet points.
Thank you, Commissioner Tabor. To summarize, the proposed project is located on a local street. Our other conditional use permits that have been approved for retail cannabis storefronts have all been on major commercial corridors. The applicant's presentation highlighted 1921 Harbor Boulevard. That's in the C2 zone. That's an area where we anticipate really intensive uses. 2845 Harbor Boulevard, that's Costa Mesa's auto row. There's, you know, major car dealerships there with a lot of impacts. Those are areas where we, again, anticipate those high-traffic uses. They've called out other properties that are also, actually all of them have been C2 and C1 zones. Those are the locations where we would expect those types of uses. And in some cases, there, there were specific conditions of approval to decrease the impacts on nearby neighbors. But in this case, the CL zone is really specifically designed and the definition includes using caution to make sure that the uses are compatible. This is a really unique area. It's a buffer zone and it's on local streets. So this would be the very first retail cannabis storefront that would be on two local streets in this particular zone and really be a change in the pattern of what's been approved in the past. The applicants also pointed out that they've gone above and beyond to change their use to make the site work. But in some ways, that shows that the site doesn't work. It's a very challenging site and they've had to go through and make a lot of accommodations and sort of to force this use to work in this specific location.
Is that all, Commissioner Tabor? You're welcome to continue if you have further questions.
So Jim, there's like that map with like everybody that lives within 17 miles apparently saying like, let's do this. There's a couple neighbors saying it's not cool. I don't know. Like it's sitting across the street from someone's house and next to someone's house and, um, is it really like everybody in the neighborhood in favor of it? Except for like a couple people that...
No, I, I think we're, we're done with questions directly to the applicant. I think I'll take it as a, as a, as an open question. But if you have questions for staff, specifically, you're, you're welcome to, Commissioner.
So Commissioner Tabor, maybe I can assist. It sounds like you were predominantly concerned with the type of public, um, input that we've received, the outreach, from the outreach and from the noticing and, and et cetera. We don't necess, we don't necessarily believe that a certain number is critical. What we're more concerned with was, is the type of comments that we've received, type of comments that we've received from the neighbor, there has, neighborhood, there has been a lot of them, more than a couple dozens in opposition. And, but more importantly, the opposition indicated concerns about similar issues that staff had with regards to the intensification of the use in a, in a predominant residential vicinity and the traffic and some of the other issues, you know, or that, that the staff report highlights. But the main thing that we want to really address, and I think some of the comments even did so, was that the, the issue is not just cannabis for, for this project, I mean for this app, for this location. The issue is any retail that's... The issue is any retail that's more intensive than what is really anticipated in that zone. So those were some of the comments that we received from the opposition, and those are the comments that are kind of consistent with what the staff concerns were as well.
Jim was saying that by right, any retail could open there 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 or something. Is that true?
A limited amount of retail is allowed in that area, and the zone allows for uses that the staff report points out, like banks, I think laundry, offices, other types of uses, sure, and they wouldn't have any times of limitations in hours. With regards to cannabis regulations, cannabis regulations absolutely do have limitations on hours. And the planning commission has a discretion to make changes to projects that are for conditional use permits. For instance, conditions of approval often limit hours of operation to be more neighborhood
Thank you, Commissioner Tabor, and thank you, staff. Before I forget, Commissioner Rojas, do you have any questions, sir?
No, I don't have any questions. Just listening to everybody's conversation here is answering the questions that I have. Thank you.
Okay, just let us know if you do, sir. Thanks. Commissioner Vivar.
No final questions, sir.
Okay. Anyone else up here? Commissioner Bertha.
Yeah, I would love to hear from staff, what would a six-month review look like?
Thank you, Commissioner, let's see, Andrade. So if we, you know, right now, we don't have conditions of approval drafted, but for others, we have included a six-month review period, in which case we would look at how the use is operating, including any complaints, and opportunities to improve the use. But at this point, we don't have any cannabis storefronts that have been in operation for long enough to us have, to, for us to have gone through and created a template, and to create a template for the inspection and for those potential mitigation measures that would occur. So it's a little bit new in our, in our city's process.
Okay.
I might add a little bit to, Michelle, thanks. We might look at police calls, we might look at traffic changes, we might go out and visit the site on several occasions. There's numerous things we might do. There really is, it really basically depends on, you know, the situation.
Any other questions, commissioners? Commissioner Zick, vice chair? No? Okay. Seeing as how, Commissioner Vivar, do you have other questions? I see your mic.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will now close the public hearing, and may I have a motion?
Yes, sir. I will move that, can you remind me of the application number, please, Chairman?
Sure. It's planning application 21-36.
So I'd like to move that we deny planning application 21-36 per the findings in the staff report prepared by Planning Department, and their findings on the detrimental impacts to the local area, and violation of, potential violation of this project of several policies of the municipal code.
Question for staff before I move this to a second. Technically, do we need to also include the CEQA findings as well in this motion? Okay. So Commissioner Vivar, if you'd like to include any additional information on CEQA?
Yeah, and I'd like to find that the project is in fact exempt for CEQA regulations, 30, I don't remember the exact number, but per an existing use project, an existing use building, gosh, an existing building.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar.
If I may interrupt, yeah, I'm sorry. The CEQA guidelines exemption is for a disapproved project, which is 15270, and then also existing facilities. But that was basically if it was approved. So really, the appropriate CEQA exemption is for the disapproved project in conjunction with the denial motion.
Okay. So I'd like to add, so CEQA.
15270.
15270.
Perfect, thank you.
My condition, thank you.
Okay, so the, the motion from Commissioner Vivar is to find that the project is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act per CEQA Guidelines Section 15270 for disapproved projects and deny planning application 21-36. Is there a second? No one? That motion fails for a lack of a second. Is there another motion?
Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
I would like to move that we continue this item to give staff adequate time and opportunity to develop conditions of approval for the planning commission to consider for an approval, and if there's a second, I will elaborate.
Second is by Commissioner, Vice Chair Toller. Commissioner Zick, would you like to elaborate?
Yeah, so the very first thing I'd like to do is to, I'd like to commend Ms. Halligan for her work on this. I recognize the challenge that she had and the responsibility she has in putting together a analysis for this project that considers our ordinances, considers the intent of the ordinances, considers the residents, and I realize how hard that work is. The fact that I look at some of these things different from her, I want to make clear is no indication that I disagree with her or that I take any exception to her professional opinion and analysis. But when I look at this application, and for example, and I'll go through several, this idea that this is the first application that we would consider approving on a local street. Semantics, I'm kind of big on semantics. Every single application we've approved is on a local street. It's local in Costa Mesa. Now, it may not be a residential street, and Cabrillo is arguably residential street. It's arguably a commercial street. Why? Because you've got residential on one side, you've got commercial on another. We talk about how the ones that we have approved are on major commercial corridors. Well, yeah, Harbor Boulevard, major, major commercial corridor. And if anybody has sat in these meetings before and heard me talk, I'd like to keep those major commercial corridors. But as you also know, with the passage of Measure K and the re-allocation and our challenge to provide more housing, those major commercial corridors are prime targets for additional residential. So we can't really say we're only going to put cannabis on major commercial corridors, not near residential, or at the very same time, we're going to be putting residential on these major commercial corridors. Can't really have it both ways. When I look at the facts in support of denial, there's a perspective that I can agree with, but that isn't the perspective that I take away overall. The CL Commercial Limited District requires some special precautions. I completely agree with that. What special precautions have been taken? Relocating the entrance to this business off of Cabrillo and onto Fullerton. That's a precaution. Putting landscaping along the Cabrillo frontage of this business. To me, that's a precaution. Hours of operation, reduced hours of operation, not only starting later in the morning, but finishing up later in the evening, earlier in the evening, excuse me. To me, that's a precaution. Their general business model of trying to slow down the customer, spend more time consulting with them, to me, that's a precaution. The idea of a buffer to residential, this is a tough one in a couple of respects. First of all, if you look at what's already in that area, the Gym, Santa Monica Seafood Company, the other businesses and bars that are in that area. I stood there for probably 30 minutes looking, and I've been to Santa Monica Seafood Company, so I was not surprised about this. But if you just stand there and you just watch the traffic coming and going to that business, and it's right there, right next to this cannabis proposed location, it's a tremendous amount of activity. This isn't a quiet, sleepy location, and the idea of buffer, I don't know if we've adequately provided a buffer, if that's truly our intent. It's a commercial zone. Commercial is allowed there. Neighborhood commercial is allowed there. I forget who it was that read something about 17th Street only serving local residents. Well, that's not a rule exactly, maybe an intention, but I think anybody who's been up and down 17th knows that there are probably some Newport Beach people sneaking over, eating at these restaurants. Maybe some Huntington Beach people sneaking over, too. If the intent is just local commercial business, I think this almost sets itself up to be exactly that kind of a business. Who's going to find this place? You can't see it off of 17th, you can't see it off of Harbor, you can't see it off of Newport. So to me, when they talk about what constitutes neighborhood commercial, it's right here in the staff report, convenience shopping, markets, drugstores, retail shops, financial institutions, service establishments. What I'm really saying is, at this point, I'm not approving this. I'm just not convinced it should be denied. That's what I'm saying. We say that this business has not provided a mechanism to regulate customer traffic. I suppose in some respects, that's true. I can't think of a single business where we have required a mechanism to regulate customer traffic, except maybe In-N-Out Burger. They've certainly put a mechanism into control of traffic, but other than that, I can't think of another business where we have talked about imposing on them that kind of requirement. And maybe there is a mechanism they can provide. I don't know if we've given them that opportunity. Certainly, the fire code, I think, would establish some kind of occupancy limits, how many customers you could have in the store. I don't know. At this point, I'm not approving this at all. But I just don't see enough gravity in these findings that suggest that it should not be approved. A comment that says the applicant has failed to demonstrate that the proposed cannabis storefront would not be substantially compatible. You have to prove that? I don't know. I just don't, I haven't seen that before. The, the other finding that happens to be on page five, it says, "When operating in accordance with the professionally-prepared security plan and in conformance with local and state laws, the proposed, proposed use would not be materially detrimental to public health. However," and it goes on to say, "the applicant has failed to demonstrate that the more intensive change in commercial use proposed would not be detrimental." Again, it's almost having to prove a negative. You have to prove that your intensive change in commercial use is not detrimental. Well, maybe you've proved it, maybe you haven't. I'm not saying you've proved it, but I don't think this finding convinces me that a denial is warranted. Costa Mesa residents overwhelmingly approved this retail measure, overwhelmingly, well more than 22 votes. Overwhelmingly approved it. What did they approve? What was their intent? Keep it away from schools. Yep, council kept it away from schools, kept it away from daycare, kept it away from homeless shelters. Did they keep it away from residential? No. Was it accidental? No. In fact, it specifically addresses the concern about proximity to residential and what must be done. They specifically considered it. The residents that approved this, oh, by the way, I should have said at the outset, I am no advocate for the cannabis businesses. If anybody has watched these in the past and heard my comments, you would know I am no shield for the industry. My job, though, is to apply the policies that the council has approved, that the voters have ratified. That's my job, to try to balance the rights of a business to the rights of the homeowners. And the ordinances, I think, provide the language, the guidance for that, the framework for that. I don't see an approval here. I don't see a denial here. But I don't even have the opportunity to approve this because I don't see all of the conditions of approval. I know we've conditioned other businesses, but to just say, let's cookie-cutter that on to you here tonight? No. I wouldn't try to design an approval tonight without having adequate staff support, because the conditions of approval include not just the things that they included on this one page in the staff report, because, on page 10 of the staff report, because there's other conditions of approval that are coming from the building department and some operational things that aren't here. So again, I'm not going to try to craft an approval here. I'm not sure approval is even warranted. But I don't see denial warranted either, which is why I think there needs to be a continuance, to give staff an opportunity to document conditions of approval. We had 20 people come up and talk tonight. Of those 20, five people were against this. Now, this isn't a vote, this wasn't a ballot box. We counted up, and the winner is who was, that, that isn't what it is, because I also have 75 letters from people that said, I don't like this. They're form letters, doesn't take away from their opinions, but 75 people said they didn't like it. Well, they didn't show up tonight. The input that we have in this public hearing is what I heard here tonight and what this documentation was. A lot of people want this business here. A lot of voters want this business here. And I want to have a staff report that gives me the opportunity to look at what conditions of approval could be considered for approving this project. That's the basis of my motion for continuance. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Vice Chair Toller, comments on your second.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with everything that Commissioner Zick said. I don't think that this motion is in danger, so I will save everybody all my notes. It's getting late. I will just say a couple things in response to some of these objections, just real quick. The lingering objections out there have a lot to do with a conflation between these, these dispensaries, cannabis dispensaries, as they're coming in and conditioned, as we've implemented very carefully, Measure Q, a conflation between those and smoke shops. Smoke shops, I looked in the land use matrix, would be allowed by right with no conditions in this, in this spot. And I looked it up, 2015, city council passed an ordinance on smoke shops. City council finds that smoking and vaping uses have been associated with increases in noise, loitering, odors, public nuisances, and disturbance of the peace. And so a big point of miscommunication that I find in every single one of these is us mixing up the two. And I trust what I've heard and what I've learned over the course of this whole Measure Q adventure that we've been doing, that these are different. These are not the same thing, especially with our, with our conditions. Also, a lot... Also, a lot of objections have to do with cars, and I cannot accept that lots of cars crashing on the street is the business's responsibility. If there's a lot of crashes there, it's not Santa Monica Seafood's fault, it's not the hairstylist's business around the corner's fault. We hear the same things when apartments are proposed to go in, and I can't accept that. People drive recklessly, maybe it has to do with street design, maybe we need some stop signs, speed bumps, rumblers, whatever the applicant was talking about, I think that's a great idea. But yeah, I, I can't accept those objections. Last thing I'll say, I think it's, and everything I say is with total respect to staff in recommending denial, because I, I would prefer that staff, they would be conservative with these sort of things and not go out on a limb, and I think that's our job to be using our discretion up here. So I really appreciate the staff report and the care in all of this. But the last thing I, I would say is, I, I think that it's dangerous, not dangerous, I think it's a bad precedent to deny a, a business to move into a house. If you look at the square footage, it's 300 square feet, the sales area, this is a small, quiet business operating out of a house. To say that is incompatible with residential uses, to be consistent, we would have to deny all sorts of things that I think would be good for the city. Neighborhood cafe, neighborhood, you know, we, we talk a lot in this city about walkability and bikeability, we have, just read through the language of our circulation element, it talks about that, our active transportation plan, we have a pedestrian master plan underway. Walkability entails places to walk to. So to say that non-commercial use is too close to residential uses, I think that's dangerous territory. I don't want to go there, I don't want to be part of that sort of precedent. So I agree with everything that Commissioner Zick said, and I'm in support of the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Toller. Commissioner Rojas, do you have any comments on the motion?
None, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Taber, do you have any comments on the motion?
I just kind of agree that, like, I don't know if the case was laid out good, that this is a firm case of denial, like, there's just too many unanswered questions and factors, and it's my first night, I don't know what I'm doing. But if you guys can, you know, I would love it to have, like, more information to make. I, I think that you've worked on this for a long time and have given us all kinds of stuff, but it's kind of a bummer that it's like, zoned for this, and they met all the criteria, and then the recommendation is for denial, and I'm just not quite there. Like, I would like to hear some more stuff.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Vivar.
Yes, sir, thank you. First of all, I want to start by thanking everybody who came out tonight. You know, none of you had to be here, but every, every, each and every one of you made the time to come out here, so thank you for that. And I do want to address comments that were made and give, give my kind of response. So regarding the, some of the community members that came forward and this, and expressed concern at the traffic levels along Cabrillo, you know, that, that's a problem, that's a problem. I don't know that this is the, the forum to have discussions about what can be done to alleviate some of those problems of cut-through traffic, which is defined as vehicles going from major arterial streets through streets classified as local street to another, to get to another arterial street. That is a concern, that, that is a valid concern, and I, I encourage those who are concerned about the, the street, reaching out to your council member, reaching out to Department of Transportation staff to get this, continue discussions there. And to all of those who came out in, in support of this application, again, thank you as well for, for coming. And regarding many of the comments that were made about not needing to drive to Santa Ana or to Long Beach to get your product, you know, I agree with that, there, there should be uses that are close by, that people don't have to drive long distances to. But I, I will say that there is one retail cannabis site already operating in the city and 13 more to follow, so you really don't need to drive to Santa Ana or Long Beach anymore. So why, why do we need, why, why this location? How will that change the math for the, the cannabis users who want to get their product in Costa Mesa, since there are, there is one and will be 13 locations to, to shop at locally? So the, the reasoning that this is needed to cut down on trips to other cities, to me, doesn't hold up. And the, the, the fact that this is, is in fact located in a, in a residential area, bringing it back to the, some of the comments about the cut-through traffic, just because there is cut-through traffic and an issue there with some safety concerns, the traffic going through there, accidents and whatnot, doesn't mean that it's okay to add more traffic to the, to the, to this, to these streets. Many of the commenters who were here in support said that they, you know, go and, and visit this area, this business, so, you know, great that they'd be shopping locally, but, you know, then they'd tell their friends, and their, those friends would tell their friends, and, you know, pretty soon, you know, if this became a, a really popular spot, which I am sure that the applicant would love to have, you know, then there would be a, you know, really viable concern on the impacts of traffic, the increase of traffic going through these streets, you know, and as, as a transportation engineer, you, I, I know that you can never fully know what will happen, you make the best estimates possible. And I, and I recognize that city staff has tried to do that, and, and I have myself as well, you know, but that, that doesn't take away from my concern that we will in fact be adding traffic to a street that is already experiencing problems of cut-through traffic and impacting the walkability and the bikeability of those streets. For anybody who's visited the area, some of those streets do not have a continuous sidewalk or have sidewalk that is not paradeia standard of three feet, or of at least minimum four feet. So, you know, in some of those places, people do have to go out onto the street, and increasing traffic is, is, is not going to help. And, you know, I, I think that this business could, could be viable if, as staff pointed out, you know, they followed a similar, a similar business model to some other businesses in the area that operate by appointment only, which would cut down on the peak hour trip concern, and, or if they moved to a delivery model, that too would, you know, would allow, would literally allow them to control the flow of traffic in and out of their site. So I don't see that the current, that the current business would not cause any of those concerns, rather, I, I believe that the business would cause those detrimental impacts, which is why I, I had initially recommended denial of this application. But if it does come back, and I'm convinced that, you know, it, it is approvable, you know, we'll have another discussion then. So, you know, again, I, I think we need to remember the sort of bikeability and walkability efforts of the city, and if we are making decisions up here that are going to be increasing vehicle traffic through a street classified as a local street, then I think we are moving away from that goal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Commissioner Andrade Vallarta, no, no comments? I will close things out by making a, a few brief statements across the board. I will, I'd like to side with a lot of what Commissioner Zick and what Vice Chair Toller said, in that there wasn't enough to get this over the line in its current form, in part because there are no conditions of approval that correspond to what we would weigh. And I don't think that we, as a commission, right now could cobble these conditions of approval together tonight. I think that there are some glaring, potential glaring issues with what is proposed here, particularly in the following areas, LU 3.1, C 1.11, and N 2.9, as areas within our general plan. I can see why staff made the recommendations that they did in this current form, but I would be curious to see additional information, if possible. And I don't, I don't think that us asking you to bring this back is a failure on your part to put together a very high-quality presentation, because it was. I think if anything, it warrants additional information if we can put that together. And if you can put together conditions of approval, that instead of looking at it from the end of, "This is why we have to deny it," if there is a way to say, "Well, these are all the things that would make us feel at least okay enough, regardless of what the operator would want to do," then that would be something that's worth consideration, I think. So I don't know if the answer is to shorten the hours of operation, to try and satisfy some of the additional demand on traffic within this area, but it's at least something that we would need to consider. So I will be supporting the motion tonight to bring this back, and you guys can do what you got to do, because you're really good at it. Okay? So with that said, Anna, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Question for staff real quick, so does this need to be to a date certain, so you don't need to re-notice, and the public hearing be reopened before we close tonight?
Yes.
I think that we would need more than a one-hearing continuance. It's going to take some effort, and we've got other things that we've been working on in the meantime, that have also had some priorities. As I'm looking at the schedule now, I'm seeing, that's why I'm not seeing anything.
It's just a question whether you can pick a date out there on the calendar.
Right, I can, we can, we can pick a date and continue it to a date certain without a problem. I'm just looking at some dates that are probably possible. I would say probably the 27th of February, of February, February would be the best date to go, then the quickest.
February 27th. Okay.
Okay, then that's my motion.
And the, is that, how does the second think about that, bringing it back on the 27th of February?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so the motion on the floor is to bring this item back, February 27th, with conditions of approval. Mr. Dropkin, am I missing anything else in that motion?
No, I just, I just want to clarify, I think, and just to clarify, what I initially envisioned would be bringing back two resolutions, one with the conditions of approval like that, the, the, the commission has indicated, and then it also seemed like the commission wanted to potentially revisit the denial with more, with more information, so maybe a two resolution staff report, attached to the staff report, basically one for denial and one for approval to consider, or no?
I'm, I'm okay with that. Does anyone else have any further thoughts? Vice Chair.
Based on the evidence I've heard, I, I wouldn't want staff to spend a lot of time on that, but, yeah.
Okay, I have direction.
That's me.
If that's, if that's the way the planning commission wants it, no, just, would just revise the staff report and add a resolution for a condition of approval, that adds conditions of approval for a resolution for approval that has conditions.
That sounds about right, Mr. Dropkin, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So without further ado, unless anyone else has any, have any additional comments, Anna, roll call vote, please.
Chair Erith.
Yes, sir.
Vice Chair Toller.
Yes.
Commissioner Rojas.
Hi.
Commissioner Zick. Commissioner, Commissioner Andrade? Commissioner Vivar?
Nay.
Commissioner Taber?
Yes.
That motion carries 6-1 with Commissioner Vivar voting no.
Thank you, Anna. That decision is final unless appealed to the City Council within seven days. Let's see here, that brings us to department reports, starting with the Public Services Report. Mr. Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No reports from the Public Works Department, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Development Services, Ms. Lee.
Thank you very much, Chair. I just wanted to welcome the new commissioners to the Planning Commission. It was a good meeting for you to start. I also want to congratulate our new chair and vice chair, congratulations, and I know that you'll provide an excellent leadership for this commission. With that, we have a very big year to look forward to, so one of the things that we will begin to do in the coming meetings is to provide updates on our accomplishments from last year, some performance indicators, as well as looking forward to our priorities for this year. So thank you very much, and enjoy the evening.
Great, thank you, Ms. Lee. That brings us to our city attorney, Mr. Prezioci.
No report, Chair Erith.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prezioci. Well, that brings us to the end of the Planning Commission, dated January 23rd, 2023. Thank you very much, good night, we are adjourned.